If you could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. We're going to have our invocation by our Police Chaplain, David Mitchell. Please go ahead.
Let's pray. Our Father God, we thank you that we can come before you in a special moment like this, where we gather together as a city, as a community, God, that your great will would be done. Father, I'm thankful that you're a God who loves every single person in this community. The City Council and all the leadership, God, I pray that you would watch over them, that you would guide them, that you would give them wisdom, that the communication would be effective, that what is said would be heard and would be being heard as accurate, that, God, you would help facilitate the working together of our community and the leadership of our community, and that, God, you would unite them on the things that are important for the betterment of our community, for our citizens, Lord, to have leadership that we can look up to. As Jesus once said, "A house divided against itself cannot stand." So, God, I pray that you would unite us all together, Lord, that we would achieve those things that are set before us, those things that are priorities that makes us a better community. So, God, all these things we give to you in the City Council meeting, and thankful for these leaders as they step forward and provide the kind of leadership that we need. So bless them, lead them, and guide them. And we commit it to you now in Jesus' name. Amen.
You may be seated, and I'll call on Mayor Protem Martinez, who is going to have the first recognition. So I'll turn the floor over to her at this time.
Haka, if I could have you and Hassan's entire family and his friends that are here from the planning community, please join me. And I'm just going to warn all of you and those who are watching from home, please come on up, and those who are in the audience, that if I break down emotionally, please forgive me, as I move forward with this presentation and as Hassan Hagani's family comes up here. Something not very easy to do, but... I tried to tell myself not that I wasn't going to break down, that this is a time to celebrate, but Hassan was a very special human being, and certainly somebody that I can personally say I had a great affection for him. And so it's not very easy to be here today, because last year at this time as well, my brother was in the hospital and passed away yesterday, but there's also celebration where my twin brother just gave birth, not, he didn't give birth, but his wife gave birth to a baby boy who they named after my brother who passed away last year, Peter. And so as I look at that blessing and bringing someone into the world, but losing somebody that was extremely special, extremely special person, not only in the lives of his family and his partner who is behind us, but left an impression and a legacy, not only in this community, but various communities throughout Southern California. And so I'm going to read so that I don't continue to get emotional here, and I apologize. So Hassan Hagani worked in six Southern California cities as a planner, if you guys please join me closer, as a planner, and as a Director of Planning in three of those cities. Before accepting the Director position with the City of Santa Ana, Hassan was responsible for two large-scale specific plan in West Hollywood and Glendale that helped revitalize and transform those areas that they were in. Hassan also created, and it's just very cool, which is a design studio in Glendale by bringing in renowned urban design planners from San Francisco. To this day, that studio comprises of several staff members and an integral part of the planning of the city of Glendale. Once onboard with the City of Santa Ana, Hassan's ambitions, talents quickly emerged. Hassan launched an in-house comprehensive general plan update, becoming a historical event, as Santa Ana was the largest city to attempt such a comprehensive study in recent California history. And I'll tell you that we've gotten this far in our general plan, not only because of Hassan's vision and Hassan's tenacity, but because he embraced and encouraged and empowered the people who worked for him. That's what made Hassan special. It was never about him, but it was about how can he motivate and encourage those that work for him to dream big and to believe. And that's one thing that Hassan instilled in me and why I pushed so hard to get him his money, so that he can, you know, get this general plan and the grants that I possibly can get to help assist him, because I was a big believer too in that big dream, that vision of his, that I wanted to see it come to fruition here in this great city of Santa Ana, as I've seen in West Hollywood and I've seen in the cities of Glendale. Hassan reshaped the planning division by including community development staff responsible for the community engagement and outreach to ensure that community voices were heard and formative in the planning process. By securing the funding, Hassan was able to double the size of his planning division. Beyond his contributions from a business and community standpoint, Hassan Hagani breathed and... Look, this man was a fresh breath air, for those of you that didn't have the opportunity to meet him, beyond just being bold and not caring what people thought about him, he also had this amazing smile that really captivated a room, and his energy was just amazing. When he walked in, I was like, oh, what happened to my energy? Because I typically have a lot of energy, but when he walked in, it was like, where's Michelle? It's all about Hassan. And that's what I loved about him. But more importantly, he also, every time we met, he always offered, "What, how can I help you become a better policymaker? What do you need to learn so that you understand this process?" And that's one thing that I'll never forget about Hassan. And today, we also celebrate Persian New Year's. Do I, can I pronounce that right? Noruz?
Yes.
Noruz, which translates to a new day. That being said, the City of Santa Ana would like to wish everyone a happy New Year's Day, and, excuse me, and today is March 20th, and we wanted, on behalf of the mayor and this entire City Council, name today, March 20, Hassan Hagani Day.
Thank you.
And so, give you the proclamation, hold a moment. I will read a couple of the whereas's, but Haka, would you like to say a couple of words about Hassan and possibly his mother, or any of his siblings that would love to speak about Hassan?
Certainly.
Yes, fantastic.
No community impacted Hassan the way that Santa Ana did. From the moment we moved here, he was inspired by it. This is a very unique community in all of California, and we loved it. We loved living here, and Hassan would come home just inspired by the very people that this entire body serves. And it's a great honor to be recognized on this day for all that Hassan wanted in his career and his vision for planning and his love of this city. So, on behalf of everyone here, I thank you very much for recognizing that and to honoring Hassan in this moment. Thank you very much.
And I see some of our staff that is in the audience, and truly wanting to thank them for, you know, really notifying us, but more importantly, helping us shape and put this proclamation together. So thank you, Candida, and thank you to all of you, Ali, who are all out here, for your support during this time, and to his family, and to the entire City of Santa Ana, and to all our residents, the pouring love and support that you all have given since his passing. And this is just a special moment, not just for us here in this city, but throughout Southern California, because he had a tremendous impact on so many people's lives. I always tell people that, what is your preferred future? Our preferred future is dependent on the policies that we make today. We know what our community is going to look like five to 10 years. And Hassan was very good at understanding that. And that's probably why, you know, it's with great difficulty and great pain and emotion to share with all of you, that even though I take great pride in honoring this day for Hassan, he certainly will be missed, but we will always remember his smile in this room as he sat here on these chambers, and the transformation that he was able to make, not just within his own department in planning, but through all the departments here in the city. And I just want to just share a quick story. When it was his last day, I figured to myself, okay, I'll come and say hi, and then we'll see what happens. Well, Hassan, it seemed like Hassan had a whole day planned of activities on his last day before he was leaving to the city of Ontario, and I was devastated, like, you can't go, Hassan, you can't go. But when he looked at me, and he said, you know, everything's going to be okay here, Michelle. You have an amazing staff that is going to be able to get this general plan done. But more importantly, and he always said this about Santa Ana, it's the people of this community that make this city special. And that's why he had so much, he put his heart and soul into this city, and we saw that. And so thank you for giving us the opportunity to have Hassan here in our community and shaping it to what it is. And so with that, if... Haka, we come over here so I can read the whereas's, and we'll take a picture, and just wanting to, you want to share who's in the, here with us?
Yes, absolutely. This is Hassan's nephew and my nephew, Hadi. This is Hassan's brother, Mohsen. In front of him is Hassan's mom, Azizi. And this is my brother-in-law, Hamid. This is Hassan's sister, Fa, and Hassan's sister, Leila, who's come all the way from Copenhagen. This is my mom. This is my sister-in-law, and this is Hassan's Aunt, Heshma. Thank you very much.
Okay, so, thank you. So I'll read the last, just whereas, whereas Hassan Hagani truly had a vision for the City of Santa Ana that through his hard work and determination was achieved during his time here. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the City Council of Santa Ana, do hereby declare March 20, 2018, as Hassan Hagani Day, and remember him for his devotion to the community and for touching the lives of those he was in contact with. And today it's dated March 20, 2018. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Would you guys like a picture so that we can send to you? Okay, yeah. Wait.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mayor Protem, and I'm Councilman Sarmiento, and as the family for Hassan leaves chambers, I just want to say thank you, and we're so sorry for your loss. But, you know, everybody who I speak to in the city who had any contact with Hassan had nothing but great things to say, and he certainly, in the short time he was here, left an impression on all of us. So we're all proud of him, we are going to miss him, and thank you for sharing him with us and with the residents here in the city. Thank you. So moving along, I'd like to have Councilman Villegas, if he'll go ahead and join me in the next presentation. If I could have the following people come and join me up here, this is going to be a certificate of recognition to the Project SELF staff and team. If I could have Nalita Yanez with the Rancho Santiago Community College District, and if I could have Don Isbell, who is the CTE Director, Karen Juan with the Orange County Bar Foundation, its Executive Director, and an Associate Director and Project SELF Coordinator, Nancy Garcia, and Karen Kahapea. I hope I got that right. If not, you can correct me when you come up here. You know, as they come up here, we're going to be talking about this great program that, you know, a counterpart of mine, Trustee Yanez, brought to my attention, and, you know, there's just so much great work that's being done here in the city. And as the only attorney up here on the City Council, I'm especially proud of the work that you do with our youth. And it's really ironic and sometimes coincidental, but I had a paralegal who I once had working for me, and she was a staff person for then Congresswoman Sanchez. And we met out in Washington, and she, you know, we had a young, you know, a young daughter and a young son, and my wife and I were there visiting, and we happened to bump into Congresswoman Sanchez, and her staff person, or one of her staff, was Elisa Bruseno. So you guys probably remember Elisa. So Elisa, you know, was a young, you know, college grad, was interning with Congresswoman Sanchez at the time. She volunteered to babysit our kids while we were in DC. And so one thing led to another, we, you know, we realized she was from Santa Ana, we got to know each other really well, and she became interested in law. And so she was applying to law school, and during that time, she decided to get a little bit of career experience, and sort of similar to what you all do, we kind of adopted her and brought her into my office, and she was a paralegal there, and went on to Chapman Law School. And so realized that the law wasn't for her, which was pretty smart of her, realized that at an early stage, and decided to change careers and got her master's, I believe, in public administration. But she is just one example of, I'm sure, the great work that you all do, and I was so proud of her, and I just wanted to thank you all, and thank Trustee Yanez for bringing all the good work that you all do to our attention. And I know that you work very closely with the Santa Ana Unified School District in this effort. And basically what the program is, it's Project SELF, and it's the Summer Employment and Law Firms Program. It's for the youth, and it is done in cooperation and in partnership with the Orange County Bar Foundation. And somebody else who is very near and dear to our heart is Martha Madrid. So Martha is married to Max Madrid as well, who's a staffer now for Congressman Correa, who followed Congressman Sanchez when she decided to retire. So it's all a big family, but we're big fans of Max's, we're big fans of Martha's, because she does such great work, and big fans of yours, because you do so much to help our youth. And law is one of those areas that, you know, there's, you know, as an attorney, I've heard every attorney joke there is in the book, and as a politician, I hear, you know, just as many. But really, the importance of law is sometimes diminished by sort of this image that we have. It's a very, very difficult discipline, it's a very difficult area to navigate, and I think introducing folks to the nobility and the real selflessness that it takes to be an attorney, to be a counselor, to be somebody who represents others, especially the good work that the Bar Foundation does for folks who, you know, may not have the means, may not have the resources, take cases pro bono or low bono, we realize that it's an essential need for many folks, especially in Santa Ana. So thank you all for doing what you do. But this is in partnership as well with the Orange County Association of Legal Administrators. Project SELF has provided paid internships at Orange County law firms for Santa Ana Unified School Districts for the past 23 years. So that deserves a big round of applause. 23 years going strong. It's helped over 850 students in Santa Ana to set educational and career goals to gain access to professional work environments. They provide students with college preparation and scholarships, and it promotes and supports education for the youth in our city. Today, we recognize Project SELF and the Orange County Bar Foundation for their contributions to the community through their commitment to youth in our city. We have so many young people in our city that need mentorship, that need guidance, that need counseling in all disciplines, whether it's law, whether it's medicine, whether it's sciences. And, you know, these folks give of their time, they're selfless, they realize that there is a big void, because sometimes, you know, in our school system, we don't cover areas like this as deeply as we should, but they fill that gap. And so I'm very, very proud to have them here today. And I know my colleague, Councilman Villegas, is intimately familiar with the program, has worked with the program for years, so I wanted to give him the floor to go help and help us address that and say a few words that he'd like to share with you all as well. Councilman Villegas?
Thank you, Councilman Sarmiento. Yes, Orange County Bar Foundation, Project Youth, Project SELF. I've been an instructor with the Bar Foundation 16 years in their crime diversion program. They have, and I want to congratulate them for all the hard work. They are one of a kind. They have so many different programs to help the youth in all different areas, it's just incredible. And I want to thank them for all their hard work, and congratulations on your recognition today. I'm very proud to be part of the Bar Foundation, and I thank you again for everything.
Thank you, Councilman. And so I wanted to present this with my colleague, Councilman Villegas. This is a certificate of recognition with a lot of kindness in our hearts on behalf of all the residents and all the students that you've served in our city, for the great work that you do to Project SELF, Project Youth, the Orange County Bar Foundation, in recognition of your outstanding contributions to the community. Why don't I give this to all of you to share, but I'd like to have a few words from you all to let us know a little bit about the program and all the help that you've given to our students. So I'll go ahead and, Trustee?
Okay, okay.
There we go, okay.
I don't have anything planned, but I've been with Bar Foundation for 28 years, so I guess I know it by heart by now. As I mentioned, Project SELF is an opportunity for high school seniors, they're going into their senior year to get a professional experience over the summer. A lot of the kids have part-time jobs, but they tend to be at like McDonald's or, you know, different exposure to jobs that aren't in the professional setting. So by partnering with the law firms, the kids are able to go into a professional setting, meet professionals, and I must say, lawyers have been so good to our students, the lawyers, the administrative staff, they're so impressed with the students, they're so willing to listen to the students, hear about what they're doing, and their aspirations to go to college, they help them with advice, and they share their own experiences. So I will say the law firm, all the law firms say they get so much more from the students than they feel they give. They're just so, so proud of how well the schools are doing with the students, they're happy to have the students there for the eight weeks of summer. So the project has done really well. Like you mentioned, we've been doing it for 23 years, we have 850 students who have graduated. Some go on to work for law firms, either paralegal, maybe an attorney. I mean, obviously, everybody's not going to law school, that's not the goal. The goal is to just show them a professional environment. If they're interested in college, give them that support. Recently, we've heard back from a lot of, the reason we keep doing this program year after year is because we have so many graduates that just said that was a turning point for them in their lives to decide that, yes, they wanted to go to college, yes, they wanted to work in a professional environment, and this gave them the opportunity and the little push that they needed. So 23 years later, we just hear from so many past students on what it meant to them. We also have a higher ed program that prepares them for college. And between the two programs, I am proud to say that this year, we have raised, just the Bar Foundation has raised the money for the schools, we have hit the $1 million mark, we have given $1 million in college scholarships. So there are a lot of kids going to college, and, you know, as long as they're interested in going to college, we will, you know, keep hitting up the private sector to donate to college scholarships. So happy to do it, and thank the school district so much. Every year, they open their doors, they have the kids ready, they let us use their facilities, and they're just so proud of their students, and they're just so grateful that we come and do what we do, that they wanted to recognize us, and we're just so happy with the school partnerships. So thank you.
I had the opportunity of being one of the instructors for the Project SELF, and CTE stands for Career Technical Education, and many of you have probably heard or even gone through that process in the past. It used to be called ROP, Regional Occupational Program. But my involvement with Project SELF has been to actually be in, as an instructor, and I go and check up on the kids throughout the summer to make sure that they are learning, that they're getting the exposure in the law firms, and that they are becoming professional young adults. And it's not just about the money, they're learning to be disciplined with their time, with their responsibilities, with how to get along with other coworkers. So it's a social, professional, and integrity, and ethical education that they're getting from this Project SELF. And I truly enjoy doing that, because this is a springboard for the children, actually young men and women, that go into their different careers. So even if they don't choose the law career, it's a springboard for other professional areas. If this had been going on, Project SELF, when I was ready to jump into the career world, ah, let me tell you, I'd be an attorney like my... And I, yes, I would have been doing that. My career was as a paralegal, and so that's my involvement, as my background in the legal field for over 40 years as a paralegal, and recently I had the opportunity to become the instructor for Santa Ana Unified School District in the CTE program. But it's not just about the professor, it's about the, all the people, like you heard today, the Hispanic Bar Association, the Director, the Program Coordinator, we have Karen Kahapea, so she handled the program, Project SELF, for many, many years, and she has been truly motivational and inspiration to many of the students, many who may be your neighbors, who are professional, who may be even attorneys by now. And of course, our Director, who gives us the motivation and support and the professionalism for us to keep going, because you truly have to enjoy the place in order to make it a place where it's learning and it's a fun place to be. It's not just the salary that we get, but it's truly a place that we can make a difference for the young people. And you know that cliche of making a difference is all over the place, but here at CTE, we really make a difference, because with the people such as Project SELF and instructors like Karen Kahapea and our Director, Don Isbell, we are the ones that are giving the students that platform, that motivation, the support, because college can be overwhelming. So if we can give them a little view into what to expect and what, how to act, and what to do when they reach obstacles, or how to jump over obstacles, or push aside financial obstacles, we make that difference. And you'll see that in the continuing graduation rates from the Santa Ana Unified School District. But I'd like to give our Director, Don Isbell, a moment to give you his side of the story. Don?
It's a little low, but... I'm Don Isbell, Director of Career Technical Education for Santa Ana Unified, and for the ladies back here, on behalf of Santa Ana Unified and the City of Santa Ana, I cannot say how much of a difference you've made for 850 kids over the last 23 years. The motivation and the inspiration... and the inspiration that the Bar Association has been able to do is truly transformational. Most of the students are first-generation college students. Most of them have not had a family member that has worked professionally before. And these experiences that the law firms throughout Orange County that they work with truly provide a unique opportunity that is not represented anywhere else that I'm aware of in California. And so thank you so much for what you do for our students here in San Ana. Thank you so much.
Great. Let's give them all a big round of applause, and we're gonna take a photograph with this beautiful certificate. And, you know, just a quick story. So the reason why I got into law was because I interned one summer with an attorney. His name, he was a resident here in town. His name was Milton Grimes. Milton Grimes is probably one of the most famous litigators, was very close with Jerry Spence, who passed away and was a very famous litigator as well. But there's a whole story, because he had his office on Broadway. They used to call that sort of Legal Row, right? Because all the offices are there. But I know our mayor loves lawyers, by the way. He keeps them employed and keeps them busy. So he just, the more lawyers we can generate, the better, right? So keep doing all the good things you're doing and inspiring all those students. Let's take a quick photograph.
We're tweeting it.
One, two.
Hold on, we have...
These two photos are turned off.
It's mine.
Oh, here's another one.
You know you would.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I have a very special presentation. And at this moment, the mayor and council members, when we take the photos, you're all welcome to come up because we have in our midst today, somebody who I believe has given back tremendously to our city, our county, our state, and our country. And I'm really pleased and blessed to have him here. And I'd like to have him come up as well as his lovely wife, our former mayor and congressman, Jerry Patterson. Come on up, and Linda. We've had nothing but great mayors these past decades. And, you know, before Mayor Palito, we had Mayor Deng Yang. And before Deng Yang, we had Jerry Patterson, who's served here, first on the city council in 1969. And he was mayor of the city during the years of 1973 and 1974. During those years, he brought energy, honesty, and positive changes to our city during a time of major changes and rapid growth. There's a long list of things that he did here in the city and in Congress, but I'll highlight what I think are some major accomplishments and some remarkable things. In addition to being on our city council, he served on the Civic Center Commission, a joint powers authority with the county. It was nice, and now it's getting a little rundown. We're gonna fix it up again. And by the way, we now have permission to also find better places for the homeless, and then rebuild and do better. So I'm proud about that. Congressman Patterson, I don't know what to call him, whether mayor, congressman, or just Mr. Patterson, but he commenced also at the time a reluctant city council to buy the only public transportation system in Orange County. At the time, it was called the San Ana Bus Company. And from that, over time, it morphed into the Orange County Transit District, and now into the Orange County Transportation Authority, that we have a guaranteed mayoral seat on, by the way. So that legacy of leadership continues. Congressman Patterson was also the chair of the first Human Relations Commission with diverse citizens and churches in an effort to improve race relations in our city. He also became the chair of the first Community Redevelopment Agency in Orange County. So that's another big first. During his six years on the city council and two years as mayor, Mr. Patterson, the council worked to expand our parks, which is a good thing, and we're still building on that. With tough new standards on new development, new development projects we had in our city and negotiations with the federal government to obtain FCC property, he helped double the acreage of parkland property in San Ana. Let's give him a round of applause for that. Now, we're only incrementing it going, so for, you know, the leadership to double the amount of acreage is simply amazing. And in 1975, Mayor Patterson was sworn in as a United States Congressman. The very first bill that he introduced, by the way, was to establish the City of San Ana as a place of holding for a federal court. Although this took many years to make it work, given all the, you know, legal and planning processes and committees, because of the efforts of our mayor, the Ronald Reagan Federal Courthouse now stands proudly in our downtown Civic Center. And with that, let's give him a big round of applause. Before we do the certificate photo, I'd like our current mayor to also say a couple of words.
Thank you, Councilor Solario. First of all, you know, Linda and Jerry are just such wonderful Americans, wonderful patriots, wonderful people. They've donated literally thousands and thousands of hours of their lives to public service, and they have made a difference. You know, your years in Sacramento, Linda, and what you did there, serving under different administrations, on different boards, always stellar. And Jerry, you have a career that, you know, spans, you know, more than a lifetime. And the folks that you've worked with, and the things that you've gotten done, and yes, that courthouse wouldn't be out there without you, because even though many of us had a chance to work on it, you're the one that initially, you know, set the stage and placed the marker, and then we all defended that flag, and now that building exists, and it's a beautiful building because of your efforts, Jerry. And then, of course, the, you know, the San Ana River, and many other, you know, projects and monies that have come to the city over the years. So I really want to thank Councilor Solario, because I know this is his idea, to honor you this way, and it's so apropos. It's very, very appropriate.
Thank you. So now let's hear from the mayor himself, Mayor Patterson. And by the way, his leadership continues. He's also on the Coast Community College District Board of Directors, educating, you know, the next generation of leaders. So that's awesome. Mr. Mayor?
Well, this is one of the biggest honors I've ever received. And I appreciate it so much, because it was Santa Ana that gave me my start. I was here as, came here as a young lawyer, from Garden Grove, all the way from Garden Grove, and decided to make this my home. And in 1969, I ran for the city council. That's about 40 years ago, almost 50 years ago. And when I ran, the city was in some turmoil, as things go in the political world. That was an exciting year, because the first Mexican-American ever was elected to the San Ana City Council with me. We ran as a team. And Ray Villa is that person. He's passed away now, but Ray Villa and I became the team that started this work. So it was the people of San Ana and the city of San Ana that gave me that privilege. And you see up here, our podium of the council is all Latino, right? And that is a measure of progress that I am proud to have started as well. And let me, my wife says K-I-S-S, you know, keep it simple, short, stupid, you know. So if I don't shut down right now... But I was gonna introduce her, and you did such a great job. Linda Moulton Patterson, my wife, has...
Say a word, please. You've done so much.
Well, I just want to thank you for honoring Jerry. It is well-deserved. He's done so much. And thanks for honoring me, too.
She's way too modest. She's forced me to do it.
They're a great leadership team. And if some of the other councilors also like to join us for a photo field, please come down.
If I can just tell one quick story, maybe lighten things up.
Go ahead.
You know, I was the second mayor to be, have an office in this city hall. And before that, we were in the old one. Okay.
Who was the first mayor?
The first mayor was Lauren Grisette. And Lauren was a great man who worked with me on a lot of these projects. So here we were, and I was the new mayor, and the fire chief, John Garthie at the time, is your fire chief here tonight? I don't know, maybe not. But the fire chief was here, and he whispered to me, before the meeting started, that we had a 100-foot ladder truck out here so the city council could take a look at it. And I thought, wow, that's pretty super. So I announced it. We took a recess. We went right outside, and I just jumped on the ladder, which was my first mistake of the night. And they, and I said, how high was this go? And they said, 100 feet. And so they pushed the button, and it's electric, you know, and I'm hanging on, shaking, and shaking, and shaking. And it got up to, what I didn't know, it got up to 85 feet. And I thought, when I yelled down, of course, there's a microphone right here, but when I yelled down, I said, how many feet to go? And they said, I thought, 50 feet. And I said, oh my God, it took me down. And so they took me down. And I found out later, it was 15 feet. And I've always regretted that I never went the last 15 feet on that ladder.
185, Jerry, and that's...
So I'm willing to come back and try. No, thank you so much. This is a great honor.
To our fire chief, can we arrange to have him, do we have a 100-foot ladder, right?
Do you want to go?
Do we strap him in? What do we do? Strap him in real tight? If you want to go, Jerry, the chief says we can be arranged.
Let's give the mayor another round of applause. Thank you. He, by the way, when I was elected to the State Assembly, he administered my oath of office, so I'm very thankful for that as well. Next, I'm honored to recognize another very important person in our community who has helped many people. That's Anel Delgado Ayala. She's an officer of the consulate of Mexico in San Ana. You can come on up when you have the opportunity. She was recommended, by the way, by an immigrant rights group, a women's group called Mujeres en Progreso. And Anel is a specialist in international family law and a counselor for victims of domestic violence, sexual abuse, and human trafficking. She's also a successful emotional coach and international lecturer. For 10 years, Anel has followed her greatest passion to support women in vulnerable situations through legal and emotional support, and above all, through empowerment programs, all of which are offered by the consulate of Mexico in San Ana. Thanks to the work of Anel, literally hundreds of women in Orange County have benefited, and their lives now are better. Additionally, through a program called Women Entrepreneurs, Anel has been able to support women interested in starting their own businesses, which is great, because I do an annual workshop on how individuals can start a new business in San Ana, so we'd love to have you there. Created in 2015 and derived from the need to support women to achieve financial independence, Women Entrepreneurs has helped Orange County women break free from cycles of violence and dependence. Today, we recognize Anel Delgado Ayala for her work with the consulate and her many contributions to our community. Let's give her a round of applause.
Thank you for this recognition. I prefer to speak in Spanish.
I'm gonna translate her, okay?
Okay, thank you. Muchas gracias por este reconocimiento a todos los miembros del congreso. Gracias Consejo al Solario. Primeramente decir que este trabajo no es solamente mío. Es un trabajo de equipo. Para progresar se requiere que nosotros empecemos a generar estos equipos. Y en primer lugar quiero reconocer al consul Marco Antonio Freire, que el día de hoy, por cuestiones de trabajo, no está aquí. Sin embargo, este trabajo ha sido, en colaboración, 100% de él, quien desde hace 10 años ha sido mi mentor, quien ha facilitado todo, todo lo que ha tenido dentro del gobierno de México para impulsar a nuestras mujeres, a nuestros migrantes. Este proyecto de mujeres emprendedoras surgió en el 2015, viendo la necesidad de mujeres que vivían situaciones de violencia doméstica. Y entendimos que una de las necesidades era la dependencia económica que estas mujeres presentaban. Entonces, al ver la necesidad de que ellas pudieran generar independencia económica, se crea el programa de mujeres emprendedoras, que ahora impacta también no solamente a mujeres sino a hombres. Y asimismo, también se tienen muchos programas de empoderamiento para la comunidad hispana, para la comunidad mexicana. Grupos de apoyo para víctimas de crimen, tanto hombres como mujeres. Grupos de apoyo para víctimas de abuso sexual, de violencia doméstica, y todos los servicios que se ofrecen en el consulado. Sin embargo, bueno, quiero, quiero hacer público esto. Han sido proyectados por el consul Marco Antonio Freire, y a quien le doy las gracias públicas coincide con mi salida del gobierno de México. Yo precisamente ya he tomado la decisión de seguir empoderando a la comunidad desde una perspectiva privada. Agradezco mucho este reconocimiento, y ahora pretendo hacerlo de manera privada para seguir apoyando a mi comunidad y a todas las personas que viven aquí en el condado de Orange y en la ciudad de Santana. Muchísimas gracias.
Now, a translation.
Thank you for this recognition, for the city council, and for also Councilman Solario. And thank you, first of all, this work is not my own work alone. This can only be done as a team. Progress requires teamwork. So I'd like to recognize a person who cannot be here this evening, Consul Marco Antonio Freire. The work that I've been doing is 100% his effort, his doing. For the last 10 years, he's been an inventor, an innovator to facilitate the successful, to helping women be successful. This program has been in place since 2015, and to help women become independent and to exit and to be free from domestic violence. And one of the things that we found is that, one of the things that don't help women or prevent women from being independent is economic independence. So that's why they cannot leave a domestic violence situation. So through this program, we created the Work Women Entrepreneurs Program to make this possible. Now, it's not only for women, but also to make men financially independent. And this creates a lot of support work, support work for crime victims, support work for sex abuse victims, domestic violence victims. And this is done through Consul Friday's help. So I am, at this point, leaving the consulate to pursue private practice and to continue supporting the community in Orange County and Santa Ana.
Let's give her a round of applause for all the work. Let's give her a round of applause for all the work.
Before we begin this meeting, if I could have the rest of the council, I'm not sure if they're in the back, so that we can have a quorum. There's only three members. If we could please get some of the members of the council to please join us. Mayor Polito had to leave so soon. He's feeling ill. We'll go ahead and excuse his absence. Great, thank you. With that, we have a closed session report. Madam City Attorney, do we have anything to report out of the closed session meeting?
Yes, Mayor Protem and councilmembers, members of the public, we do have a couple of reportable items for you this evening. Number one, second case in the Chavez versus, the City of Santa Ana versus Chavez. In that case, we settled that case in the amount of $56,000 by a vote of six to zero. We also have reportable action under a liability claim in the case of Corona versus City of Santa Ana. It's a workers' compensation case. On a six-to-zero vote, we settled for $71,164. And the other matters listed on the agenda, we received direction from our council. And in the matter of the City of Santa Ana versus California Lodge, I'm happy to present that we settled it, but the city is receiving the value of over $200,000, and that also was approved by a six-to-zero vote.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Now, we're going to move, I do things a little different. Mayor Polito's not here. I'd like to put public comment first, and we only have a few items, so that's what we're going to do. He is gone for the rest of the day. We'll excuse him right now when we get to the consent. But public comment, this is a time and place for the public to address the city council on consent calendar and regular business items. If you would like to address the city council on any other matters within our jurisdiction, we will consider those comments after we handle the items on the agenda. So non-agenda items first. If we can please have Savannah Gear, Susan, followed by Virginia. I think they are, oh, OC Clean Power, they were here earlier. If they come back, we'll get to them. Dale Helvig, followed by Rayshawn Gadsden.
Yeah, I think everybody's in shock coming up early here, so appreciate it. Dale Helvig, I'm here representing the North Santa Ana Preservation Alliance in our opposition against the 2525 Main Street development. Last week, at the special city council meeting, I heard one of the councilmembers say, "You do not stop the voice of the people." And I couldn't agree more with that statement. I and others will continue to show up at every meeting of the city council and planning commission to ensure you know the people of Santa Ana do not want this project to go forward. It's a five-story monstrosity, and we object to it. The North Santa Ana Preservation Alliance roster has grown to over 1,300 people. Most are opposed to the project. There are a couple that are in favor of it. Yet, we continue to hear comments from the representatives of Vineyard Developments that are really disturbing. They say that this is a done deal. We are going to build this. Don't worry about it. Again, why is the developer so confident that this is going to be built to his desires, his wishes, and not the desires of the people of Santa Ana? At a meeting that the developer had with some of the residents on adjoining property lines, he even said that he wasn't going to talk about traffic because that's the city's problem. So he doesn't really care about that. North Santa Ana Preservation Alliance is not opposed to the development of this project, but we are opposed to his development. If we don't talk with them, they think they're going to make decisions on their own. If we talk to them, or when we have talked to them, we still have a long ways to go before we kind of come to a consensus. We feel with the right leadership from the council, it can't stop this development from happening as currently designed. Our numbers continue to grow, and we did not look at this issue as a done deal. The community has an attitude that this is not a lost cause, and we can affect change. The people of Santa Ana are speaking out loud and clear, and we do not want Vineyard Development to build their five-story monstrosity.
Mr. Helvig, if you can conclude?
I'm all done. We're still looking forward to meeting with a couple of the councilmembers, and we understand we have a meeting with you next week.
Correct.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Helvig. Followed by Rayshawn Gadsden. And then Robert and Igla, you follow.
Good evening, Council, Santa Ana. I'm Rayshawn Gadsden from Tampa, Florida. I addressed the council on the 6th of February with an idea I had to stimulate the cannabis business within Santa Ana. I would like the council to hear my phase-one proposal. I've given it some thought, and I would like to basically ask for additional time, whether closed or whatever protocol, to share this phase-one idea with the great city of Santa Ana.
Great, thank you, sir. You can communicate with either one of our assistants over there. They'll be able to help you coordinate a meeting with the council. Robert, followed by Ilya Teslin.
Good evening, Protem Martinez and respectful Santa Ana city council members. By them is Ilya Teslin. In regard to Agenda 25B Amendment Agreement for Special Legal...
No, Ilya, Ilya, you're speaking on the non-agenda items.
Oh, non-agenda.
I have your card here for 25B, too, but you're speaking on just regular comment.
I'm sorry, I thought...
You cannot, okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I want to notice that I will not tell you about the public defender. Type is Bianchi Hill, Faldon, Judges Hubbard. Type is Lee Brown, Mobley. Sometimes, they, not sometimes on the side of families, but instead, they always on the side of the regional center. So we don't have a court, really. Not my family, not other families. The Court of Probate Family Mental does not exist. It's just a court for regional center. I know that this problem not under your supervision. I address to the county. But I want to address on my behalf and on behalf of people that Santa Ana City can assist my family and other people by with Santa Ana Police Department. I am going to have a meeting with the city manager on April 10 that I want to discuss, I want to ask only one thing. For years, the police department have really a decent people. But every time when I am calling, coming the same people...
Ilya, can you please wrap up your light's red?
Oh, I'm sorry. Bias, and I want that will come not biased people and make a report.
Thank you, Mr. Teslin. Thank you. If I could please have Robert Teslin, thank you.
Hello, Honorable Board of Supervi... I mean, sorry. Santa Ana City Council, this is Robert Teslin, Brother Nate Teslin. Stated in the board, I've stated regarding, as my father said, the public defender issues here. With regard to your jurisdiction in Santa Ana, in my brother's case, obviously, he's been confined in the 903 South Harmon Group home, which is in Santa Ana, City of Santa Ana. Many times, police have been at the home before. Now, they many times have refused to do a welfare check, although my brother has reported increasing, you know, his health deteriorating and so forth. You have paramedics that are supposed to also respond if an individual alleges difficulty breathing and alleges, this is not to mention any other abuses, such as physical abuse. This is to mention issues with his health, which can be tested with medical tests, EEG test results, so forth. So you have paramedics who have been involved with dereliction of duty. Obviously, police officers are not medical personnel, and they're not expected to be so. So, however, as my father alluded to, he would like to have police do their duty in terms of keeping the peace if there would be an arrangement for... You have a group home where medical personnel are not allowed. Visitor visitation is severely restricted. Families harassed, accused of recording or this or that, which, why don't they allow my father to take pictures of his own son? That's a question. What legality do they have? What legal right do they have to restrict that? It's not even a private home. It's rented by regional center funds, which are interned from the Department of Developmental Services, which is interned from the state of California. Certainly not a private home, and my brother has been confined there. So you have this issue, but you have an issue where they are able to somehow convince the police that they're not supposed to be under any welfare checks or so forth. So this is amazing. So you have this concealment. So I hope your police can somehow figure out, your attorney can figure out to arrange something to save his life. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Next, Juan Gonzalez. Welcome, Juan. Long time no see.
Long time no see. Good evening, Mayor Protem. Members of council, it's great to see familiar faces. Purpose of my visit, I wanted to come before you today to introduce myself as a new Public Affairs Manager for SoCal Gas here in the city. I also wanted to extend and provide you information as there are a couple of projects coming into your city. I'll be looking to reach out to your Public Works Director along with your city manager. And also, if I may, also provide information to our customers, your constituents, in regards to any activity going on within their homes. Call 811 before you dig. Any activity in expansions of homes. We've been having a lot of issues with third parties going in and digging trenches and hitting utility lines. So call 811 before you dig. And also, if you're having any issues within smelling of gas, please do not hesitate to call our 800 number, 800-427-2200, 800-427-2200. So I look forward to working with all of you. Look forward to having separate meetings sometime in the near future. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Great to see you guys.
Welcome back to Santa Ana.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Great to see you guys.
Fantastic. That is it for our non-agenda public comment. I'm now moving towards the consent calendar items, 10A to 25AF. Any members of the council wishing to pull any items?
25C, mayor.
25C.
25E.
25E. Councilman Solorio, any items? Fantastic. I am pulling 10B. Actually, I'm just going to just state for the record, 10B, I'm a no. 10C, I'm a no. And 25D, I'm a no, and I'll be pulling 22A. And if we can do as well, Madam Clerk, where do we do the excuse absence for Councilman, for Mayor Polito?
You can excuse him now, although he was present for a portion of the meeting, so an excuse is not necessary.
Oh, okay, fantastic.
Only for the housing authority.
Okay, when we get to the housing authority, we'll excuse his absence. Great, thank you.
May I please make a motion to approve the remainder of the calendar?
Sorry.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Great, motion passes. First item, it is 22A, and I will just be very brief on that as I'm running the meeting. And that is in regards to the 800 megahertz radios. If I could just have our staff very quickly, just wanting to make sure. I know a couple of years ago, we ordered the same amount of radios. I guess is this second round of radios, is this a wrap? Or are these new full-on radios for additional officers, additional fire? Can you just please expand?
Yes, there are additional radios for the new hires that we have coming on just to maintain our inventory.
Fantastic. And with that, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Great. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Fantastic.
And we do have, before I go to 25C and 25E, we do have two members of the public that wish to speak on 25B. So if I can please have Ilya and Robert Teslin please join us again.
Thank you, Protem Martinez, that gave me possibility to talk about this agenda. My name is Ilya Teslin. In regard to Agenda 25B Amendment Agreement for Special Legal Council Services, I want to offer to amend this agreement to the point of providing the legal assistance for the citizen that cannot afford to be represented in the court or objected to be represented in the court by public defender. Do you use a public defender department pays to their employees $170 per hour? Then it can be passed this money to the independent and private attorney. It is from my experience and from experience of all the families. Note, I want that noticed, not one family, not few, not numerous, all the families. We are misrepresented, misrepresented by public defenders. And type of Hill, Bianchi, Faldon, this is, it's just a client misrepresented in the court. And regarding what I mentioned about police department, your city can complement the justice by sending the police department unbiased officer that can make unbiased report. It's well-known by community that my son Nate Teslin, for years, mistreated and abused in Santa Ana on 903 South Harmon Street. Every time when police department coming, not every one of them, they have a decent people, but at the same time, they sending people who on the side of the hall.
Mr. Teslin, your light's red. Thank you very much. Robert?
Hello, Honorable Santa Ana City Council, Robert Teslin, Brother Nate Teslin. With regard to this item, with regard to your saying for legal amendments, legal services, of course, in the area of something to do with operating illegal marijuana dispensaries oversight or whatever, maybe protecting from liability and so forth, just on that basis alone or on other basis, just to compare and contrast so that you would... I mean, it's pretty obvious you have an example of a difference between marijuana, which I think has been somewhat legalized in California, and you have an issue where nevertheless, you still have legal issues. And then you have an issue of Zyprexa and Depakot, and you have an issue of a psychiatrist who testified under oath. And you can check this case number A, 246780. There is supposed to be a transcript where he testified under oath that Zyprexa does not cause seizures and that no single death would occur if even, not even a death, I mean, a drug would not be approved by the FDA if even a single death occurred. So he's overriding either black box label warnings for the drugs. So you have a compare and contrast. We have marijuana, which I think almost never had a death occurred from overdose and so forth. And you have these dangerous black box labeled drugs, which are allowed, where an individual is being confined and allegedly being poisoned on these drugs. And you have, of course, county liability, but the city as well, because the police and maybe paramedics could do something about it. And they've been called before and seem to have failed to do so. So hopefully, they wouldn't fail currently and wouldn't take advantage of the situation where my brother is being abused and hopefully can intervene in a more positive way. That could be helpful for Nate, most importantly, and maybe for the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Have a good evening. Next is 25C, Councilman Sarmiento.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I just had a quick question on this for staff. I know this is a request for a school resource officer, and I believe this is a full cost recovery agreement for a period not to exceed three years. You know, my question is, is that it looks like, and this is for the School of the Arts campus, it looks like they want to improve their security and add a police officer that will sort of police the area and help them with any activity there. I guess my confusion is that, you know, is this going to take one of our officers sort of off their beat? And, you know, and I get that this is going to, you know, we're not spending any money on this, but isn't this more within the jurisdiction of the school police department since they handle campus security and all the issues that we've been having recently with campuses throughout the country with, you know, violence and, you know, and crime? And, you know, I get the fact that they want to enhance... And, you know, I get the fact that they want to enhance the security, but look, I'm just not sure if, if we're the right department or has, has the, has the campus considered maybe working with the school police department versus ours? Maybe that department is better trained, has more experience dealing with campus security? I mean, I'm not saying this isn't going to work. I'm just, I'm just curious why our department and not the school police department?
Councilman Sarmiento, I'm going to have the police chief provide some history because I'm not familiar with it, but I do know that this agreement, the reason we're comfortable with it, given our staffing situation, is that the School of the Arts is fully aware and comfortable with that we may have to pull this officer for anything that's happening in the immediate area that might need additional resources. And conversely, if there's anything at the school that requires additional resources, we would, I guess, bring him to bear to that situation as well. But in terms of the history, I don't have that. Maybe the chief can shed some light.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem, counsel. The history on the contract there was in 2010, the Santa Ana Unified Schools District Police Department contracted with then OSHA for the school resource officer on the campus. That's a full-time position. Fast forward, last year, that agreement came to an end, and so they do not have a police officer from Santa Ana School Police Department there. It's a charter school, and so there may be a difference of philosophical perspectives on providing resources. They approached us. I was actually involved in setting up that contract back in 2010, so I have a working relationship with the staff there. And they approached and asked if we would be interested in establishing this contract service. It is a full, fully compensated contract service, not only for the officer, but all assets that are required for the officer. And what it does is, it does provide a force multiplier from that site. So we have an officer assigned to the high school there, and if needed, that person could obviously leverage any, any need in the immediate area. And they're well aware of that and are supportive of that. So to answer the question in terms of is it going to remove an officer from frontline policing, we're going to recruit for that position and place the officer there. And so that would be just an additional resource that we have available to us there on the school campus. Obviously, school safety is paramount. We work very closely still today with Santa Ana School Police and will continue to. In fact, we have a joint exercise that's in place for early June once school is out. So that's just an additional resource to have there. It is a nice agreement that they would fully compensate for their position.
Well, I appreciate your giving us some context on that. And obviously, since you served as the school police chief for many years, you're very familiar with that, so I appreciate that. So I just wanted to make sure there's value added and not value lost, right? So if this is going to be a position that you're going to fill and recruit for, this should add one more officer in the area that could be, you know, could be called upon if something happens off-campus grounds to be able to do the, to be able to, you know, support some of your other staff that's out in the community. Yeah, and I'm in agreement, whether it's a charter school, whether it's a public school, our campuses are being, are under siege unfortunately. And so I do think whatever we can do to, you know, maintain the safety at the campuses, it's a very important role that we all have to have some responsibility in. But, you know, are the costs the same, you know, I guess if, you know, so when, if, if the campus, if the School of the Arts were to retain somebody from the school police, would, you know, would the cost recovery, the amount that they're being, that they're expending for this resource officer, the same thing that they would for, for ours? Or is it, is it different? Is there a disparity?
Our costs are slightly higher.
Yep, got it. Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Almost.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is 25E, Councilman Benavides.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'd like to ask some questions of staff here on this item. So a bit of history, we have at Centennial Park, the largest park that we have in the city, previously a regional park. Number of years back, we entered an agreement to have 2.6 acres of that park used for educational facility by Ron Santial Community College District. That agreement and lease has expired. However, they've requested for an extension. We've submitted a, because of the way that the agreement came about, the National Park Service needs to provide their approval, as I recall.
Yes.
For, for extension of, or use of that, of some of the park space for, for this educational As I understand here, the, the National Park Service did not find that the information that we provided to be sufficient. They're asking for additional information. Can you tell us a little bit more about what they've come back with, what they're asking about?
Yes. So the, the original 30-year agreement expired in, a while ago in 2009. We got a five-year agreement, and during that five-year extension agreement, we went through a land exchange program. And if you recall, we offered the Pacific Electric Park Site, and we were close but not enough. So we needed to identify additional park for the land exchange, and we added to the Pacific Electric Six and Lacy and Raiden Myrtle for a total of 2.8 acres versus 2.6. And so we've been doing what the National Park Services has been asked to do, which is doing the studies on recreational value assessment. And when the time comes and they tell us we'll be doing the environmental impact. They last month formally told us that in addition, we need to do a study on the parking impact, the National Park Services did. And, and that is what one of the elements is being added to the agreement today. The agreement, the cost of these studies is totally 100% being reimbursed by the college district. We have, you all approved a reimbursement agreement of around 300, over $300,000, and that's still, these consultant expenses is still within that limit. And so the current five-year extension, we've had two five-year extensions, concludes, expires in November 2019. The timeline that we have based on doing these studies and then after, the National Park Services sometime in June, once we submit the studies, will tell us whether the land exchange is sufficient or not, and they will respond on the parking study as well. And if they say yes, it's a go, then we then finish the SEQA and the NEPA, the Environmental Impact, which has a public, open to the public scenario. And if everything goes well, we'll end up finishing in, in the fall of 2018, so that then city council, if everything goes well, will have then the authority to do a long-term agreement, and you'll have a year before the, the agreement expires to negotiate with the college district for a long-term agreement. That was based on council's direction many times, including presentations, because this is a real estate transaction in closed session, a variety of different things. So the, what's new is the parking study. And, but everything is coming along. It's just a very intensive study and analysis and a variety of those things.
And I'm glad that, that it is an extensive, you know, process, and it looks like that National Park Services is being more thorough. Any indication as to what their, their reason for calling for the parking study? Is that something that, that the city hadn't necessarily called for? I'm glad that they're calling it, but I'm wondering a little bit of background on that.
No, I don't know. It could be a variety of different things. Either they, National Park Services decided to, like, they looked at aerial maps and they realized that the students park in the parking lot in front of the campus, or it could have been that citizens from Santa Ana ended up communicating to the National Park Services and saying, we have a concern, or whatever. I don't really know. I know, I know that it was the National Park Services that told us verbally several months ago and then formally told us in February that they require us to do this study on parking.
Well, again, I am glad that they're catching the fact, and I've expressed before my, my concerns about dedicating over two and a half acres, a very scarce parkland that we have to, to a school. I'm all for the services that the Ron Santial Community College District provides to, to our community and to the region. It's not just Santa Ana, it's other folks who also are able to be served and benefit from the services there. I do, and I've expressed before, there is park, there is available land on that Centennial Parcel that is dedicated for education, from what you've expressed to us in the past, I think would be more optimum. One of the reasons is that in addition to the 2.6 acres of parkland, there is that, the, the surface parking lot that essentially the community is not able to use, that is coming out to the park because it's, it's taken up by quite a few students. I'm glad that they're catching that and that they're calling for us to be able to study that.
Yes.
There are not only just the use of land and parking stalls being used up, there are the, the impacts of use, of wear and tear for a long time. That Centennial Ring Road was in, in, in pretty bad shape until very recently. So again, I'm glad that they're, that they're catching this, and I think that there is a lot there that, for us to, to pause and consider as to, that the, either when we get to the place of negotiating, that we do factor in some of these other issues. I would also be interested, at one point I requested some information, I would like for it to be shared to all my colleagues, you were able to provide some of the reimbursement on, on maintenance that I think.
We can provide that, sure.
From what I understand.
Yes.
So if you can provide it to, if you did provide it to me at one point, and I was looking for it and I couldn't find it, but if you can provide it to myself, my colleagues, just for us to get a sense of how much of the cost of maintenance.
We'll make that available, sure.
Is being able, is being covered by, by the college district. And again, whether it be at the time of negotiating, that we factor in these matters, or that we look at, I still think that there are other more optimum locations for, for the school. So I appreciate your feedback on this. I would be interested and continue to be updated, and I'm sure you will provide counsel to the outcomes of this. At this point, that's just, those are my, my questions, and I'll turn it back to Mayor Protem. Again, because I think, I don't think we've exhausted all, all options, I'm not going to be, I would be supportive of, of the item tonight, but I do appreciate just being able to get some of this feedback. And as we get down the road, when it comes to, if any, when it comes to negotiating, I think that there will be other ideas that I might be able to propose at that point. But this.
Thank you, Councilman Benavides. Councilman Tinajero, then Councilman Solorio.
Thank you, Madam City Man, or Mayor Protem. It's, I'm just a little perplexed because it's taken so long. It's been about four years that we've been talking about this. And so my concern is when we talk about if in June, you're not even saying that in June, this will be done.
The studies, yes.
The study.
Yes.
You're saying if in June, everything is done and they approve it, we're not going to be able to even negotiate until the fall. This conversation was had before, where we were told that by now, by the beginning of this year, we would have had something in place. Now, I know you're bringing up the parking study.
Yes.
Okay, what I would like to know, and Mr. City Manager, I would like for there to be follow-up on this, is this is my frustration, when I don't, when we don't get updates. Like, we trust our staff that things are moving along and that we're going to get to the finish line, but then what happens is we get a, a longer delay. In the meantime, the college is waiting. In the meantime, we look bad because it looks like we're stalling, they're feeling like we're stalling now. And so what I would like is for you to call the National Park Organization and, and ask them, what can we do to expedite? How quickly can we move? We don't want to wait till June. We want to move as quickly as possible. How long does it take?
We have asked.
And so what have, what's the feedback?
We need to submit the studies as they required, and in May or June, when we believe the studies will be done, they will then decide whether the land exchange is approved or not.
So, I'm sorry, so why does it take, was it March, April, May, three months, two and a half months to get that study done, is what I'm trying to figure out?
So the, the study, the studies that the Placeworks, this company is doing, they're studying the recreational value assessment of four park sites. Pacific Electric, Six and Lacy, Raiden Myrtle, and the 2.6 acres in exchange. They totaled 2.8, so that, that, they're 50% done, that study. Then what was just last month, National Park Services, don't know why, but they said, we want to add an additional study on parking impact. And so that's being amended to the contract. And they, you know, we could tell them, you know, could you not require that? But it's, they're the ones that are requiring it. They're the ones that control the deed restriction. And so they said that to us, and so then we believe that in May, June, we will, Placeworks, the company, will finish the recreational value assessment studies and the parking studies. Then that is provided, all those documents are provided to the National Park Services, so then they can determine, as they did once before when they said it wasn't enough with Pacific Electric and we had to add, it took time to add, to find and counsel to approve to additional sites, Six and Lacy and Raiden Myrtle for future parks. And they then will tell us if it's approved. If it's approved, I mean, if the land exchange is approved, they're not approving the go forth and do a long-term agreement, they're now saying you can now do the SEQA and the NEPA, which is the environmental impact reports. And then that has a process, and Placeworks, I believe Placeworks will be doing that environmental impact, that's part of the agreement that's being approved. And then, and then we believe that if everything goes well and the National Park Services says fine, then it would be a year before the expiration of the five-year extension, when, then it comes back to council, assuming that they agree, that we then say, you can, you can direct staff to negotiate with the college for a long-term lease.
I think what I would like to see is whoever our consultant is, that we, we tell that consultant that we want them to expedite it. And the reason that I want that is because I keep hearing if everything is good. So we have to assume that something's not going to be correct, so then we're not in June going back to the drawing board. Instead, we're going, we're adjusting for those obstacles.
We'll ask again, because yesterday I told Ron, please ask Placework, if we, if we pay more, can we go faster? And they gave us a timeline, I have it in front of me, and this is as fast as they can go, is what they said. So it's not a question of money. This is, I actually asked Ron to ask Placework, the company, can they go faster? And it takes a certain amount of time to do the recreational value assessment of the, of the four parcels and the parking assessment. So we did ask that question, and we were willing to say, how much would it cost if you go faster? So I, I can ask again, but I did ask, we did ask yesterday.
Well, it's just that we have a group of, a very, 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 very small group, but very vocal.
Yes.
That have been obstructionist when it comes to putting a sign up for Godinez, putting up a marquee for Godinez.
Yes.
Did not want the school to go there, even though it was a dirt lot. And so now are making, making issues of this, when the vast, the reality is, is the vast majority of residents don't have a problem, because that is a place where they have, it's been part of the community for years, where people go study. My mother graduated from high school there. So it's something that the community knows about, we know whereabouts, it's just we have to do something.
Well, I, I agree with you. Staff, I will continue to tell staff, if we can do anything to expedite, we will. It's just that we're dependent on, and the, our rep is in, in the Bay Area, in, in San Francisco, and we're constantly talking to the National Park Services rep. And so whatever we can do to expedite, staff will do its part to expedite. I would rather have this have gone away and we finished it and all that, but unfortunately, it is the, it's the federal process that they're telling us.
Thank you, Hidaldo. We're going to, Juan, wrap this up now to Councilman Solorio, so we can get some direction.
One question, hopefully it's a simple question. I know I keep hearing that it's a land exchange.
Yes.
But are we like really swapping land and deeds and full ownership, or are we only like swapping use or something?
So I think what I, Ron, you can help me out, but I believe is that if all of it approves, what the National Park Service will say, the 2.6 acres of the adult education campus is no longer restricted for recreational purposes, because we agree that these three additional parks. Then, so then now you can have, you can, you can have educational purposes in that 2.6.
Okay. But do I understand, though, that does not mean that the college district would own that land?
No, this is not about owning the land. This is, it's up to city council to say it's a long-term lease or.
Very good. I just wanted to clarify. Very good, I just wanted to clarify that, that's what I've heard externally.
No, this has nothing to do with ownership, the city continues-
It's really more using just the ability to swap the-
No, it's the recreational purpose of the land, yeah.
Value, okay, very good, thank you.
Great, thank you, what's the pleasure of the council?
Move the item.
First and second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. One no, Councilman Benavides, great, thank you, that is for the consent calendar, we are now moving towards the business calendar. The first item is 65A to designate a voting delegate and alternate for the Southern, for SCAGs, a regional conference and general assembly in May.
I'll recommend that Mayor Protem Martinez serve as the delegate for SCAG.
Great.
I'll second that, do we need an alternate? Are you, are you planning to miss?
If I'm not there, you definitely, we could do an alternate, would you like to be that alternate?
Well, no, I just said, I was gonna nominate Councilman Sarmiento.
Oh, okay.
So, but if you're-
Dangerous to make a motion up here.
If, right? So, but if you plan to be there, then, basically, that's my question to you here.
Oh, yeah, I plan to be there, yes.
If you're going to be there, then we don't necessarily, okay, so we have first and a second?
Great. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next is 65B, which is authorize the city manager and city attorney to enter into an agreement with related to revenue generation in an amount not to exceed $100,000 through December 31st, 2018.
Move the item.
First, by, second by Sarmiento, all those in favor. Oh, comment, yes, Councilman Benavides?
So, and I addressed this with City Manager when we spoke before, but I did want to go ahead and re-address this here in the meeting. We're talking about revenue, studying, revenue generation possibilities, ultimately potentially a ballot measure, as I understand, and a comment that I made when we were, when you provided the budget presentation, which showed that we definitely need to come up with some revenue generating mechanisms, tools, initiatives, because the city's in a place where, not just our city, but cities across the board with a number of different factors, including PERS liabilities, we're in a situation where we're in the red, we will be in the coming years. And I'll stress here again, is that with the, this idea, if we only look at potentially ballot measure, we're basically placing on the, on the shoulders of the community, the residents, the taxpayers, to be able to bail out the city, in essence. I believe that we're in a position where economic development, besides, beyond just looking at ballot measure, has to be top priority for us as a city. Business attraction, business retention, development, partnerships with some of our major tax revenue producers, Auto Mall, the main place mall, just a number of different mechanisms where we can proactively and aggressively look to, to bring in a revenue for the city. If we're going to move down this road, I think we need to demonstrate, not only demonstrate that we've exhausted and looked at all of the opportunities, but that we're proactively taking very intentional measures to demonstrate that the city's doing all our part as well to be able to, again, have the city be open for business and bring in revenue in other means as well. I don't think it would be justifiable for us to go out and ask voters to shoulder more without us proactively looking at bringing in revenue by other means as well. So I hope that through this process and through these studies, that we're going to be looking at that as well, that that's part of the plans, that's what I would, I would request of you and staff.
Thank you, Councilman Benavides. Any more comment? I just did have one quick comment, Mr. City Manager, before we cast his vote. Is this item specifically to study various options to go to the ballot, or is this an item that you're going to be looking at and reviewing to bring other things onto the ballot?
At this point, the intention is revenue generating measures and to deal with some of the issues that councils are all aware we need to deal with, and we're working in contract together because some of them are Prop 218 related, and so we're going to be working with the city attorney on this.
Great, thank you. With all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Next, it's 75A, we do have a member of the public that wishes to speak at this time. If I can please have Mr. Mike Tardoff, please join us, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and City Council. I am here in support of this ordinance to properly regulate the construction of accessory dwelling units, also known as granny flats. Residents of Santa Ana who support this ordinance are not necessarily opposed to granny flats, and this ordinance does not place an unnecessary burden on the construction of granny flats. It's understood that the state of California and the city of Santa Ana have a shortage of housing. This ordinance will comply with the requirements of the state and will allow for needed additional housing for Santa Ana residents. The city has held informational meetings concerning granny flats, and city staff and yourselves have listened to residents, and you have had input to develop this ordinance, which works to maintain the character of Santa Ana neighborhoods and is in compliance with state goals and requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tardoff. And, you know, I saw you and I went so quickly, forgot to open the hearing, but I'm glad you were able to speak on this item. This is a time for public hearing to adopt the zoning ordinance amendment 201704 to amend the provisions of Chapter 41 of the Santa Ana Municipal Code relating to accessory dwelling units commonly referred to as granny flats. I would ask our staff, do we want a presentation? First off, council, I know we've seen this presentation quite, at least twice, so we have staff available. If not, I would just ask our clerk, did we receive any other communication beyond for public comment here today?
I did not receive any.
Great, fantastic, thank you. And I would bring this back to the city council if they wish not to have a presentation.
Yeah, I'd like to just go ahead and make the motion, I know we've heard this presentation several times, I think there is one, one minor amendment that just the staff can point out.
Yes, we are making a minor amendment, which would allow non-conforming residences within the P's own professional office zone to, to have a granny flat on them, an existing non-conforming residential use in those zones.
Great, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a first and second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Great, thank you. We are now moving to 75B, this is the time for public hearing to adopt urgency ordinance allowing commercial cannabis testing laboratories and ordinance amendments number 201801 to amend the certain sections of Chapter 40 and Chapter 18 of the Santa Ana Municipal Code, commercial cannabis, to allow for commercial cannabis laboratory testing and adopt resolution to modify cannabis-related registration application and regulatory safety permit fees in fiscal 2017-2018 fee schedule. Planning staff is available for a presentation and to answer questions. We do have a couple members of the public that wish to speak before I bring it back for staff presentation and/or council consideration, so first-
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Before you begin, I just wanted to, for the record, and pursuant to conversations I had with the city attorney, I'm going to be participating in this matter and all cannabis-related matters from this point forward. We submitted a question to the FPTC on my eligibility to participate because I advise other public agencies on the legality of this industry, and they came back and opined that I'm free to participate with no conflict, so.
Great.
But actually, I'll be abstaining on this matter because I haven't had the history and haven't gone through the conversation, so I will sit in, but I will be abstaining.
Great, thank you, Councilman Sarmiento. And with that, if I can please have Alex Mohammed, followed by, I think it's Scott Kenwell. Mohammed, Scott.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, City Council and staff. I actually just wanted to come and introduce who I am. I own a medical laboratory called Equaltox in the city of testing, and we've been approached by a lot of dispensary use manufacturers to test cannabis products, and currently, we do not do it. We don't do it because we're not licensed to do it, and I think in the city of Santa Ana, you guys have a unique situation where we've already approved the usage of cannabis and not the testing of it, and the concern is that there's a lot of pesticides, and from what we see, we're in the business of separating molecules and seeing how many pesticides and unhealthy stuff is still left in the product that's on the, currently on your shelves now. So I encourage you to, to adopt the testing, but I really, really, my concern is that the bearer of entry is not high enough. You're looking for a high-complexity laboratory, you're looking for not only the right equipment, but the right people to run your testing at these facilities, people who have something to lose. I'll give you an example, there's facilities currently testing in your city now who are self-proclaimed labs. These labs really have nothing to lose, if you were to shut them down, all they would lose is their ability to continue testing. If you were to shut me down, I would lose my license, and so I am encouraged, or I'm, you know, it's in my best interest, basically, to give accurate results, conduct business the right way, and I think that's what you guys should be looking for, so, thank you.
Thank you so very much.
I'd also like to offer our services, if you guys would like to, your staff would like to come by and take a look at a facility.
Candido, if you could get his information, thank you. Next is Scott, Scott Kenwells, I think it says Scott.
My hand, it's not great.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Scott Kandel, I am a cannabis attorney, I am also the CEO of CB Labs, which is a cannabis testing facility. We have our main testing facility in Nevado, California, which is in Marin County. We are hoping to have our second facility here in Santa Ana. I have been going back and forth, sending emails to the city council, probably about six months now, I know it was on the agenda, it was taken off and it went back and forth a little bit. I wanted to sincerely thank you, I know that it's a complex issue, and at first, it was bundled together with the distributors and the manufacturers and everything, and we decided to separate it, and I do appreciate that, because it is a separate issue. The only thing I wanted to bring up is, I know one of the things you'll probably be deciding tonight is the taxing for the labs, and I went back and forth a little bit with one of the gentlemen from the playing department, I don't want to butcher his last name, his first name is Ali, tough last name to say, but-
[laughing]
It's had some good conversations, and I just wanted to share, we belong to a service called Canoregs, which allows us to go through all the different cities and counties in the state, research different things, and we found the tax rates. There are a lot of cities and counties taxing it at a 0 to 1 to 2% rate, and I think the reason is they want to attract labs into their city and county, knowing that once a lab invests in the city and county, they're not going to move, that they have to invest in the infrastructure and the facility and everything like that. So the city can then raise the taxes later, as opposed to scaring people away in the beginning. And the second is there are a lot of startup costs for labs, so they usually run in the red for the first year or so, so to have a steep tax in the beginning would make it difficult, as opposed to adding that tax a little bit later. So I just wanted to share that with you, and again, just thank you for separating this and dealing with this the way that you are, appreciate it.
Great, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
I think it's Jamison or Jason Quinones, Mr. Quinones, I think it's Jason, is it?
Jason.
Jason, okay, great, Mr. Quinones, followed by Robert Taft Jr., and then Claudio Gallegos, if he makes it.
Hi, I just want to say thank you, council, for using the opportunity to talk. I want to say, I'm Saca president, and definitely thank you guys for allowing other, for other opportunities in the industry for cannabis. I was just wondering, the reason for laboratories is to be testing oils, flowers, stuff like that. Unfortunately, in Santa Ana, there is no manufacturing or cultivation, so I'm wondering, what are we going to be testing here in the city of Santa Ana, or building new jobs as well? So I just wanted to kind of focus on that in the sense of that, you know, I'm maybe working side by side with a bunch of dispensary owners, and would like to extend the olive branch, if you have any questions about the business, because there's a couple of decisions that might benefit the city if you do a couple of things first. Like I said, if there's no flower, then there's no testing, if there's no manufacturing, then there's no oils, so there wouldn't be anything to test here in Santa Ana. So I just want to bring that up to the council and to staff, if they have any questions, feel free to talk to us, because we are business owners and we're a partner in the city, and we have given a lot of tax revenue as well, too, so a little bit of information from you guys would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Gallegos, stay here for the study session, we're speaking on the other items right after this item. Mr. Taft?
Yes, thank you, and to echo what Jason just said, I'm with 420 Central, between Jason and I and Saca, we're aiming for about $10 million worth of tax revenue for this city, and we've already given upwards of $800,000 in the first two months. So I just want to state that, you know, why is Measure BB so successful? Because it went through a vetting process, it went through a lottery. And, 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 you know, since retail is not required to test in the supply chain, and there are no licenses to grow or manufacture in all of Santa Ana, although there's plenty of illegal ones, there are no legal ones, and heck, all of Orange County doesn't even have one grow licensed or one manufacturer. And tonight, this is an urgent vote that you guys are doing, my question is, what's the urgency? This came out of nowhere, this was on the agenda last night, this wasn't even on the agenda for Friday. So what's the urgency here? So I'm gonna shift quick here. Did the city send Weed Maps a cease and desist letter? And why not? Does Weed Maps advertise illegal operations in this city? Yes. Is SC Labs up and running in this city today without a license? Yes. Has always, since the beginning of illegal shops? Has SC Labs ever been given a code violation for running a marijuana business in this city? No. SC Labs and Weed Maps are partners, they're affiliated. Does this city council get lobbied by Weed Maps? Yes, heavily, to the point that council needs to recuse themselves. Does Weed Maps advertise illegal operations in the same city, including black market stores, delivery and brands? Yes. We know where these labs are, who's behind them, and how long they've been already building out. Did this council do a backroom deal? I would say it's obvious, and if this passes tonight, there will be a lawsuit. Did the citizens get an opportunity to vote on the 10 new retail adult stores? No. Why? Because this council wants more recreational stores. And my question is, why? Why do you want 10 more stores? We have 16 that aren't making it. The black market's killing us, and you guys want 10 more.
Mr. Taft, if you could grab up, your light is red, sir.
Okay, I'll see you next Tuesday.
Great, thank you, sir. Claudio Gallegos, followed by Mike Tardoff.
Good evening, City Council, I come here representing the Office of Congressman Lucrea, and we just want to reiterate our support for responsible business development of the cannabis industry in Santa Ana. We are encouraged by the proposal to allow marijuana or cannabis labs throughout the city and continue to grow this business. It's legal now in California, and many cities have decided to demur to others. This is a chance for Santa Ana to really be a leader on this issue and bring some good revenue, good jobs to this city, and we encourage you to continue moving forward as you have previously. So thank you, and we hope you approve 75B tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallegos, followed by Mr. Mike Tardoff, our last speaker on this item.
Eli.
Mike, he stepped out, okay. Okay, he just gave me, they just gave that, and he stepped out, okay, we are now moving... Oh, okay, great. So I'm gonna bring this back, that was our last speaker. I will ask for a staff to please move, come forward and provide a presentation, and then bring this back to the council for direction. Thank you, Candido.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and City Council members.
Good evening, Mayor Proton and city council members.
Tonight, you have before you tonight two documents, two ordinances, an urgency ordinance and a standard ordinance for first reading. They are exactly the same except for in terms of content and how we are proposing to regulate the uses.
Candida, can you just state for the record that this item was on a month ago, but because we missed the opportunity to get put notice, this is why it was brought back as an emergency ordinance? I think it's important for us to clarify that.
Yes, yes. The reason that it is, it was previously scheduled, we had intended to do it, but there was some improper noticing. However, we have a time crunch on the other end. The state of California is requiring two sets of testing periods. They're saying, why now? Why are we doing this now? It's because when they adopt, when they legalized cannabis in California, they looked to other states that had done it, such as Colorado. And one of the things that happened in Colorado is they legalized cannabis, but they also required it to be tested, that the materials be tested. So the cannabis stores opened, and immediately, there was, almost immediately, there was, they couldn't bring things in from out of state, and there was a limited amount of tested material, and the labs weren't licensed to legalize the testing. So there was a backup. So the state of California said, okay, we'll allow retail sales to start in January, and then we'll phase in testing. So the first round of testing that will be required will be an initial testing of just product and cannabis content, as well as some toxins. And then widespread testing will be, the full testing will be January 1st of 2019. So there are these two phases. So we're coming up onto this July 1st deadline, and we struck, so that's why we structured it such. And we wanted to give the operators and businesses a chance to be up and running for a few months, be licensed before the July 1st deadline. So with this ordinance, if we adopt the urgency ordinance tonight, it becomes effective immediately. That would allow us to accept applications, and starting tomorrow, we could accept applications. We have a draft, staff has a draft application ready to go up online tomorrow. And for what we are also proposing in this ordinance is unlike the other ordinances that we've had for retail, we will have a single Phase 1 and Phase 2. The Phase 1 is a registration period. We just check the locations to make sure they're not within restricted areas. It's pretty, we're following the same standards that we used before, and this ordinance will codify Measure BB's, the sensitive use standards and available lands that were adopted in Measure BB. Are you, do you have a question, Mayor Proton?
Yeah, I'm just saying that we may not be able to vote on this item because it's five affirmative votes, and Councilman Sarmiento just recused himself because he wasn't participating. And I just looked here, I thought Councilman Tina Harrell was next to me, and I'm like, that Councilman Tina Harrell is not here, and so I'm not sure if he has left. His computer is still here, so I just wanted to just bring that to our attention, that we need five affirmative votes. So we can move on to the next item? He is present? Okay, so he is nearby, so go ahead and wrap up, Candida, your presentation, and then we'll have discussion. I just wanted to make sure.
All right. So this ordinance establishes the, it establishes the next, the distance criteria. This is the, this is what we're talking about using. We're talking about industrial buildings. The regulation will be consistent with the state of California's regulations, and it will be for medicinal products, and also will ensure compliance with the state's ordinance. We believe that this is an important part of the cannabis industry in Santa Ana. We believe that it can thrive in Santa Ana just because its relationship to existing cannabis industries. We already have a thriving R&amp;D industry here in Santa Ana. We have people doing research and development in other areas, and this should be very similar to the other manufacturing use, R&amp;D manufacturing uses that we already have. It creates good jobs, generates business-to-business taxes, and will require some high-quality tech and permanent, equipment and permanent investment in the area. We do have tested, these new testing facilities will be licensed by the state. One of the major concerns we do have with the testing is odor concerns, and they will also be regulated. They're going to be very small, but they will be regulated from outside.
Thank you, Candida. We appreciate it. Bring it back to the council for discussion. Councilman Gallegos?
I'd like to move the item because the testing is very important.
Great, we have a first and a second.
I think you need to take a separate action on the emergency ordinance and then the regular ordinance.
Yes, I'll do the, yes, emergency first, and then we'll do the regular, yes. So we have a first and a second for the emergency, but I think we could have the same, one discussion, and then we'll do to a second vote. There's no need for two discussions. Councilman Solorio.
Just one question. One of the speakers did ask about, is there some way to ensure that we're going to have quality testers? Or is the staff's approach just a market-based approach, and ideally, the industry or the state or someone will suggest who maybe is better at testing? But I don't know if staff's given any thought to how to try to make sure we have good actors and good testers.
We did not limit, we did not recommend caps on this, and because we did not recommend caps, we did not involve any merit assessment of these uses. So we would hope, it would be market-driven.
Okay. The only thing I would suggest maybe is the state's rolling out standards for its various licenses. If we can really just stress the type of tests involved and the city's interest in having folks that are going to be fully compliant of state and local laws, there should be maybe just some information we could share to try to, you know...
Encourage.
Be a magnet and encourage, you know, the very best testers. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I do have some, Councilman Benavides?
That's a follow-up question to Councilman's comments. Are there that we know of regulations or guidelines, I guess ultimately, that the state has in place? I know it's a new industry altogether, but is there a way for, or is there any type of regulation on the part of the state that we know of when it comes to the testing labs to be able to identify kind of the more sophisticated versus not so, basically more sophisticated, or what qualifies, you know, a testing lab? Do they have to go through some type of process with the state, or they just open up shop?
They are licensed through the state, yes. They are licensed, and they have to meet certain criteria.
Okay, with that address, thank you.
Great. Candida, I did have a question, and one I certainly understand, is the research I've been doing, that the state is highly regulating these testing labs, even more regulated than Denver or DC or Seattle and Nevada, probably some of the highest regulations on testing, that it really is going to only get a few good operators throughout this state. We know that, that those that are operating currently here in this city illegally or in other jurisdictions, the question that I do have is that obviously, they're testing various, they're a testing lab, and they do various testing, but they have been testing marijuana, whether it's retail or medicinal. I would just ask that if we do move forward with this, is that, you know, one, it's illegal to do it in our city because we didn't have an ordinance, and so they've been operating illegally. What steps are we going to take to notify them in saying that we have now established an ordinance, and they need to comply with the law? So they can't continue to test without getting a license here from the city and/or the state. Again, I'm a big believer that we have to follow a process. We want to make sure those that are paying taxes, that are getting not only a state license, but a license here locally, that, you know, they have the upper hand because they're abiding by our laws, paying into the system while others are operating illegally, and that, I don't believe that is, that that's not fair. I didn't agree with it during Measure BB. One of the reasons why I didn't support, because we had over 150-plus illegal operations, and we moved forward with this, and look how long it's taken us to shut down and open up lawsuits and just hundreds of millions of dollars being wasted. We don't want that to happen again. And so I do know that the state has intense regulations for this particular industry, but I'm wanting to make sure that we do our due diligence in making sure what the state is saying for you to, for them to get their license, that we kind of mirror and move in the same direction so that we get the best operators here in Santa Ana. And then furthermore, in regards to the taxing, I just, I don't believe that they're a retail shop, they're, you know, and I've had this conversation with you all, that, you know, and I get why we're taxing, and obviously...
It's an operational fee.
It's an operational fee, is what you call it, Candida. I definitely agree, but it's nothing like the retail component, and obviously, there are a lot of startup costs, as the gentleman mentioned earlier, and, you know, for these folks. And so what I would request to have some kind of middle ground, and I know you have this operation fee that you need to recover, and I get, if we possibly can do 5% or $1.50 a square foot versus the $2, I would ask for that friendly amendment to the person that made that motion, because again, they will have some massive startup costs, and we need to make sure that those that do come in into this, into this industry are doing it right, or they're not, they're not making shortcuts, because the last thing that we want is, you know, bad testing and having pesticides in our, in the cannabis that these operators are selling. And so I would just ask for that friendly amendment. I think it's, it is one worth our while to make sure that we do get good operators coming here.
If I can add to that discussion, one of the attachments in the report has a sample of the rates for various California jurisdictions. We have City of Adelanto, Bellflower, California City, Costa Mesa, Davis, Irvine, Long Beach, Los Angeles, Monterey, Oakland, San Jacinto, of course, ourselves, Santa Ana, Sonoma County. The ones that are probably immediate competitors would be...
Costa Mesa?
Long Beach, Costa Mesa, and Irvine. So out of Long Beach, Costa Mesa, and Irvine, Costa Mesa's 6%, Long Beach is a 6%, we're proposing 6%, and Irvine is 0. So certainly, if, you know, Madam Mayor Proton, if you're suggesting 5%, we picked 6% only because it was sort of like the market, but that would make us more competitive. We wouldn't oppose that, that staff.
And I can add that Irvine has a philosophical, they philosophically oppose any sort of business license tax, or business license fee or regulation. So they don't, they don't have any, they don't charge business licenses. So that's why they're an outlier on the 0.
I can second that.
Fantastic. And my last just question is regards to the gentleman that came up here earlier discussing about SC Labs and partnerships with Weed Maps. I don't know if they have a relationship or not, but I would just ask that if our city staff know of current illegal operators in our city now that are doing testing, that the first thing that we need to do immediately is really knock on those doors, send letters and saying, look, this city council just approved a new ordinance. This is the new law here, and so that we put them on notice immediately, because the last thing that I want, again, is those, as these new operators apply for their permits, we end up hearing, as we've been hearing with the retail and the medicinal, we have all these illegal operators operating, you know, I'm paying all these taxes, what's going on? And so I think we need to be very proactive and do what we possibly can if we have identified these illegal operators currently now. And that, those, that's just my last point. And so first, we have a comment, Councilman Tina Harrell, so this is the first emergency, and then we're going to be moving with the second vote. So Councilman Tina Harrell, then Councilman Benavides, and yes, Candida?
We have sent them a letter.
Fantastic.
And if you want to clarify that, we can...
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. What I want for us to really consider and think about is, we're one of the few games in town, and we need money because our staff, we're in negotiations with our police department as far as what we can do as far as helping with any salaries or, and so forth. We've had our city manager go before us and talk about how we need to generate revenue. I don't want us to shoot ourselves in the foot. They're coming because we're one of the few games in town. You heard the city manager say this was about market rate, where we're taxing right now? Let's not, I know that it's, you know, it might give us warm fuzzies to, you know, feelings inside to do that and feel good about it, and we do, but you know what? We should feel good about the fact that we are regulating and promoting something in a responsible manner. So I just want us to really think about that, because they're going to come here, because we're one of the only games in town, and they're not leaving. So this thing about, oh, well, you know, yeah, the startups are expensive, but there's a lot of them, they're already started up, and they're going to want to apply, and they're going to want to do business here in the city of Santa Ana, because we are one of the few that have our own industry here in the city. So this is a prime location for people to come and test. And so I just want to encourage you to, let's keep it where it is. It's not gouging them. Let's keep it where it is so that we can continue to have a strong product and bring in revenue to the city that we desperately need. Thank you.
Councilman Benavides, and then Councilman Solorio.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. You know, I know that there definitely is a, we're in a unique position currently as a city where we have permitted both initially the medicinal and now the adult use, more recently adult use, and now we're looking at testing, and then, and then we'll be talking as well about commercial. However, other cities are catching up, other areas are providing permits in line for some of these types of businesses. And so I, and I know that there's cost of business, and I think we, to my point earlier, we definitely want to be at a place where people want to come and set up shop here in the city. So I think reducing that minor from 6% to 5%, it's nominal, but yet I think it'll, it'll make us a little more competitive. And to that, to that point, so I'm supportive of the, of the motion of having it at 5%. We also received some communication with regard to the, and I'm not sure if you addressed it, I stepped out for a bit earlier, the liability, I think it's a liability, but insurance requirement, having the 2 million versus, $2 million requirement versus potentially a $1 million requirement, and the cost for the business entity. I'm assuming that staff received that communication as well, and basically this communicated, and I, this came in actually a couple weeks ago, so, but we just received it today with a, with a packet. So I don't know if staff has had the opportunity to look at what was being communicated to us, what was being conveyed, but essentially, there was mention that at the $1 million insurance policy, that a cost to a lab is $20,000 annually with a cost of $2 million, as is currently written within our ordinance, then I would assume that it's going to be significantly more than 20,000. So that's, again, another one of those points is to ensure that we're being as competitive as we can, that we're setting things up so that the businesses will be drawn here and set up shop here. Does this, it all sound familiar, or staff had...
This is our standard, these are our standard insurance requirements for... This is our standard, these are our standard insurance requirements for, um, I believe, general liability and we typically do one million and two million, uh, for businesses in the city. Uh, regarding the twenty thousand dollar annual payment on that, I can't state to that whether or not that is accurate or not.
Okay. Well, wanted to see if the staff could, uh, have any, any background on, on that or can speak to that at this point, this point. I think we can potentially, this is only one letter, so I, I don't want to go based on, uh, one letter. At any point, we can come back and, uh, and modify the ordinance if, if we need to. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilman, um, Solario.
Yes, uh, you know, I'm supportive of six percent or five percent, but the, the reason why I am also open particularly to the five percent is our neighboring cities that are allowing this are at six percent, that's Costa Mesa and Long Beach specifically, that if we do five percent, it'll be of a draw to get them here. And five percent of something is a number whereas, you know, uh, zero percent of, or of, of six percent is zero. And so I'd rather have, uh, some rather than nothing. And I think, uh, it's close enough that, you know, that the, the revenue loss really isn't significant and because our surrounding are a point higher, we may be able to, uh, you know, be a magnet for more, uh, testing labs. And, uh, also the reason why I'm particularly supportive of testing labs as well as, you know, they have scientists, they have technicians, solid equipment, so from a job and manufacturing standpoint, uh, they're, they're, they're good quality jobs. So, um, I'm supportive of just to keep it going. Um, and for council members that want, may think it should be higher, we could revisit this in the future as well and, you know, the market's also gonna change. I mean, it's really kind of in a very initial, uh, stage at this market, so we just need to keep, uh, on, on top of the rates, but it'll be a very compet- it'll be a competitive advantage if we do this quickly and then we do it at five percent. So for that reason, I am supportive.
Thank you, Councilman Solario. Councilman Sarmiento?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I was just going to follow up on some of the comments that were made earlier by members of the public who spoke. Um, and I think one of them was addressed on some of the pre-existing labs were noticed and I think that was to Mayor Protem's question. Um, on this other question, I know that the legislature has taken up the issue on weed maps and on, I guess, sites, um, social media sites that advertise those that aren't licensed and unpermitted, um, operators. Is there anything we can do aside from maybe sending a cease and desist letter, something to support what the legislature is doing? Is that something that is within our ability to do as a local jurisdiction?
Well, I, I know that other communities have, um, have, have sued and there is some talk about the state doing it as well for illegal-
I think there's a bill, I'm not sure if it's circulating, I don't know if it's been adopted yet or signed, but, um, so in any event, maybe that's something, Madam City Attorney, you could look into for us.
Yeah, just to comment on that, that the state already has issued a cease and desist to them and I would like our city attorney to see if we should do a cease and desist or ways of partnering with the state and, and their lawsuit, because I look at this as a theft of public funds where they are advertising illegal businesses that are not, you know, paying their, their, their fees and taxes to the city. So it's very important.
Thanks, sir.
If we were to follow up, Madam, uh, Madam-
Yes, um, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I know there were, there was some comments about us, uh, maybe getting involved in regulating in terms of quality, uh, testing labs. I want to sort of put that in perspective. The state is really the one that licenses labs. Really, our role is, A, the policy question is to allow them. Uh, then it's, uh, where do we allow them citing? And then to the extent that there are any kind of, uh, operational impacts to the community, uh, odor filtering systems required, that type of thing, that's sort of our purview. In terms of quality testing, we leave that to the state. Uh, and as you mentioned, they do have quality, uh, they do have pretty, a pretty rigorous set of standards. So that, just wanted to clarify, that's not how we're approaching this. We're approaching it from, to address these three items that I raised. We're not looking at that. If they, if they can get the license from the state, then, then, you know, we're not going to judge that. We're going to go ahead and figure out, do they meet with our standards and our criteria for location and, and neighborhood impacts and that type of thing.
Great, thank you, Row, City Manager. We had a first and a second for the emergency ordinance. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
Five and one abstention. We're now moving forward with the regular ordinance. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Do we need a separate motion for that one or are we doing, okay?
Yeah, we're doing, yeah, A and B.
Okay.
Fantastic. Next item on the agenda-
Did you also take action on the resolution? The third item was the resolution?
We, oh, oh, my apologies, we have to adopt, I forgot number three. Adopt, thank you, um, Madam City Attorney. The third item is adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Santa Ana modifying the adult use cannabis retail registration application fee and regulatory safety permit. Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
We have first and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Abstain.
One abstention. Next item, um, is recess the city council meeting to convene a joint session of the city council and the housing authority agency. The item eighty-eight, which is the affordable housing funds and policies and procedures. The recommendation action is adopt the draft of affordable housing funds policy and procedures subject to non-substantive changes approved by the city manager and city attorney. And we do have our staff here to make a presentation, uh, to the council.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Councilmembers, Robert Zirschmehd, Interim Community Development Agency Director. Um, this item before you tonight had its genesis in a direction from the council last summer in June of 2017. Um, the staff took that direction and, uh, worked on the policies and procedures that you have before you. Uh, these have been reviewed by the, uh, redevelopment and housing commission and recommended for adoption. Uh, we've also had a couple of visits with the Economic Development Infrastructure Budget and Technology Committee. We did make a number of changes to those. And then, uh, this process culminated at your last meeting with a workshop presentation by Judson Brown, who's here with me tonight. We would be hap- if you'd like to see that presentation again, uh, we'd be happy to do that or perhaps entertain your questions. Thank you.
So great, you've bringing this, Councilman Benavides?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem. I want to thank, uh, both my, my colleagues on, as a whole and, and the members of the Economic Development, uh, Committee for, for addressing, hearing the, the, uh, proposed, uh, ordinance and, uh, providing some feedback. I think it's a, uh, uh, or policies and procedures, that is, versus ordinance. Uh, I, I had an opportunity, uh, thanks for the presentation last, uh, last council meeting, had an opportunity to sit, uh, with staff, uh, to look at, uh, the, the proposed policies and procedures. And, uh, and I, I feel very, uh, comfortable and I'm, I'm supportive. I think it's been, it's thorough. I think it addresses, uh, a variety of different opportunities to, to, in essence, continue to support, uh, affordable housing, have clear, uh, both guidelines, expectations. Uh, I think it clarifies as well for, uh, the, the affordable housing development community as to how they can, uh, uh, process applications, ideas. What, one question that I do have of staff, and we, we talked a bit on, on the side, but I wanted to, uh, TV can address this, uh, item. Uh, so funds that come from outside government agencies, federal government, for example, have certain guideline stipulations when it comes to, uh, how, uh, the, the covenants and formulas by which the, the funds can be allocated and used. We have this opportunity, uh, we have the inclusionary housing fund that is specifically clearly at the discretion of, of council or, or the city. Uh, and I wanted to, to, uh, ask question on, as we've been looking at addressing locally, there's been community members that have brought up issues on, uh, the, the increasing cost of, of, uh, housing in the city and, and the challenges around, uh, and even the, that, that suggestions around just cause eviction, around, uh, issues, even discussion around rent control. Uh, so my, my question is if there were to be a, a, uh, housing developer that perhaps wanted to on their own have a, and I ask because I've, not only have I been approached with this idea of a self-imposed rent control, if you will, by, by a developer, there, there is also an examples, at least one right now of, uh, a, a, a major, uh, a wealthy individual and or several within the county that want to provide housing, in that case specifically that they've brought up specifically to provide housing for the homeless community, but perhaps it would be opportunities where, uh, others would, would follow suit and from an altruistic standpoint, want to provide, uh, uh, housing opportunities for lower income families. If, if there is such a case, such a situation, how would, and, but yet they wanted to look at how the city might be able to, to partner without, uh, having as, as, uh, uh, without necessarily going to tax credits or, or having a very, uh, uh, either a large request or a very comprehen- or, or a complex formula, is there an opportunity for us to be able to, uh, look at, you know, creative ways to be able to have the city, uh, you know, partner with such developers that might be looking at helping us address the, uh, housing needs?
Yes, thank you very much, Councilmember Benavides. Um, if the city were to receive an unconventional, uh, proposal, uh, you know, by an altruistic member of our community or county and, uh, and a, uh, a, and the developer did not want to, uh, submit a proposal under our regular open RFP process, um, that developer would actually be able to, to, uh, still submit their proposal through our city council initiated with, uh, proposal review process in which at least one council member would then, uh, submit a request to staff to review that developer's proposal. And then we would have, uh, an outside real estate advisory advisor analyze that proposal and then bring it back to city council for your, uh, review and recommendation. Uh, if that, uh, that project fell in a, uh, in a buy right zone, uh, that, where the approvals for the project didn't require any discretionary actions by the ci- the city, the, the developer could also, uh, submit a, a proposal for buy right funding under our buy right funding for achieving city goals and objectives process. And then, uh, staff would immediately form a review panel to, uh, review and, uh, and score their, uh, proposal, uh, for, um, to move forward in the process.
Thank you for, for addressing that. I think, uh, you know, that and the other, uh, guidelines that, that have been presented by staff, I think, you know, are, are quite comprehensive. I think creates for, allows for some creativity and as well some very clear, uh, expectations. So again, uh, overall, uh, supportive and, um, I'd like to, I don't know if the, I'll, I'll, I'll see to the, the, uh, heed to the Economic Development, uh, Committee if one of them would like to, to, to make a motion, but, uh, I'd be very supportive.
Councilman Sarmiento?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and thank you, councilmember, and thank you to staff for the good work. And I know that what we are trying to do is build in some safeguards and a good, um, responsible process to be able to appropriate the funding, uh, sources for developments like this. And I, I'm especially, um, proud of the first, um, the first criteria that talks about the level of affordability and target population, which is, um, to benefit those projects that introduce larger, um, unit space. So in other words, two, three, four bedrooms, um, deeper affordability when it comes to serving the low, the very low and extremely low income population here in the city and those families that have special needs, um, uh, and, and folks that are homeless. So, um, those were three very important priorities, I think, that, um, and guidelines that will, that hopefully the, um, development community understands that we're trying to address. And our community, different than other communities that are adopting affordable, um, you know, affordable housing policy, um, ours is a little bit more unique. Our AMI is very, very low relative to the rest of the county and relative to the rest of the state. So to the extent that these could be goals that we really, um, set as baseline goals, um, is very important. So I appreciate that and I appreciate the flexibility that we may have as well when we have, um, a project that may be proposed similar to what the council member was describing. Um, you know, we don't want to do a sole source, sort of opt-out or, um, uh, element that swallows up the entire ordinance here. Um, but we do want to be able to be flexible when it comes to something that's unique, extraordinary and may provide some, you know, very, very strong benefits to the community in addressing our housing needs and, uh, our, uh, low income population. So with that, I think this is a good step forward for predictability and, uh, having folks in the industry understand what we're looking for. So thank you for the work.
Just wanted to comment and I, thank you for raising those points. A couple of things. One, one thing that I failed to mention in our process to leading us here tonight is that we did involve the development community in the review of these and they were, they were very supportive of, of what we're proposing. And then the, uh, targeting for the, uh, the lower income and family units, uh, those are part of the evaluation criteria that we've developed and that is not a, a static set of criteria. Those should be revisited from time to time, particularly in conjunction with the update of our housing element. And, uh, but we think the ones that we have in here tonight and for the foreseeable future are, are ones that the city will want to target on, on their housing projects.
Great. Um, I'll just be very brief. I just, I, I think I've given all my comments and committee, just wanting to thank you, Rob, and thank you, Judson, and your staff, and more importantly, thanking our commissioners that had the opportunity, our housing and, is it Housing and Community Development Commission?
Community redevelopment and housing-
The community, yes, commission. I want to thank them for reviewing this as well and, you know, providing their input. And then I'm wanting to thank the residents and the various developers that, um, had the opportunity to review as well. I think, um, when we all work together, we can come up with a really great policy and product. And so just wanting to thank members of the council that participated and those in the, um, in the community and of course our staff. And with that, uh, do we have a motion?
I'll move ahead.
We have a first and second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Great, fantastic, thank you. Next item is eighty-five A. And I will be very quick, uh, with this item. Um, and, and the reason why I decided to bring this item up as we, and we've been talking about the financial issues that we're facing here in the city and possibility at, um, you know, always looking at, um, getting financial audits and, and et cetera. We all know this is a, a, you know, a part-time mayor and part-time council. For those of you who have never seen our budget booklet, there are several thousand pages and it, it takes, it takes me personally about a month to review, um, in detail as being the chair of the Finance, Economic and Technology Committee. Uh, it takes me about, um, you know, three days to review our CAFR. Um, and so tho- those are very extensive documents, um, that, um, we're, we're responsible to, to review based on when our city manager brings them. But I was, I had the opportunity to speak to a couple of folks in Irvine that they have a, a commission that's similar to this, which I'm asking for and which is a really creation of a citizens finance, finance advisory committee, which they would essentially be reviewing plans, financial documents, budgetary policies, CalPERS activity, labor contracts, medical costs and auditor selection for the city. Um, and Irvine currently does this, so, um, and I had the opportunity to speak to the chair of that committee. And what I can tell you is that when you have community participation and we have various commissions, whether it's the planning commission, whether it's parks and recreation or personnel, we've never really had a, a commission on finances. And I really believe it's a time to have an advisory committee, uh, for this council as we continue to have challenges and changes, uh, to make sure that we have members of our public that can, um, provide input. But more importantly, um, I also believe that it doesn't have to be a standing committee that it can meet when we are going through our budget cycle. And typically that budget cycle, um, typically it's about six months as our staff starts to prepare, they start to go out and do community outreach meetings. Uh, this would be a perfect time for us to assemble a committee, uh, that would be able to review, um, the, the, the items that I just mentioned here. And certainly, um, um, this is new to this council and so I wanted to bring this forward, um, for us to start considering this. As I, um, you know, as, you know, um, were termed out in about eight months from this council, um, one of the things that I've always taken pride is reviewing our budget, reviewing all our documents. And sometimes I do get on our staff's nerves and asking different questions, but, um, I have always, um, made it a point in every regional board or committee that I sit on to always sit on, um, at, or participate in an audit committee. Like today at three o'clock, I was on an audit, a committee for SCAG. Um, and so I sit on all those committees all the time because I'm always trying to learn and learn best practices. But there's going to come a point in time where you're not going to have, um, um, certain council members are going to be able to dedicate that kind of time. And so I think it's important for us to look at a, at a hybrid in looking at a committee. There, four years ago, I asked possibly us either appointing a treasurer or some other form of elected. In Long Beach, they have elected treasures on and so forth. So as we move forward, um, to give of stability to this council, to give stability to the public, um, year after year, we always hear, "We have a surplus, we're in a deficit, we have a surplus, we're in a deficit." Lot of confusion, not only on this council, but with members of the community, met, um, with various of our bargaining groups that they start to question, you know, who's telling the truth here? And so I believe if we're able to get an- And so I believe if we're able to get an outside body to help, in particular our residents, and puts an advisory committee like this would be very helpful to the city. So I wanted to bring up that suggestion as I had the opportunity to speak to the chair of the finance committee in Irvine, and it's working very well in that city. Obviously, there's various forms of how you would assemble this, but I just wanted to bring this to the attention of, of my colleagues and something that we all should consider if we choose to take direction here tonight, fantastic. If not, maybe bringing it back to the committee that I chair to maybe put something together with our staff would make the most sense if this is the pleasure of the city council. But I just wanted to bring up this opportunity. Councilman Vegas?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So this would mean you form a committee, and each councilmember would appoint someone in to form the committee, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and I, I'm supportive if, the way I look at it, it's a more education on the finances of this city to the public. And so, you know, but what other, then they're going to have, how regularly would they meet is my question. You're talking about during?
So I don't think it needs to be a standing committee. I think the only time I would recommend is when we start our budget process, right? And I don't know, I don't have the budget calendar in front of me, but when we start, and I think it's about four or five months before we get into the June and July period. So I would say a six-month period that would give them an opportunity to review everything before, you know, the budget approval comes before us. And that discussion for us starts in the second part of June. Sometimes we start in June and we approve it in July, but definitely budget has to be approved by July.
I understand the budget is public, but, you know, having someone on a committee so they can look at it and explain, I'm not against that. I actually would support this, just like I said, for educational purposes for the public.
If I may, Madam Mayor Protem, the, just reading here, the scope, it goes beyond the budget, so I think we would have, I think it would be, I would recommend an ad hoc structure as needed, but for example, if we were to come up with a, some kind of, it says budgetary policy or some kind of fiscal policy, it would probably be helpful if we had this committee that we would bring it to them before we brought it to, to the council. So I think, I think there's room for possibly even outside the budget cycle for this group to meet as needed, depending on what the issues are. Certainly, it's, it's more work for staff, but at the same time, I agree with Councilmember Vegas that it's invaluable to be able to educate our community about any aspect of government, whatever their interest may be. You know, planning commission, members get to learn about land use, you know, personnel board, of course, they get to learn about employment law, etc. So E-TAC members get to be involved with trees and other infrastructure. In this case here, City of Oakland, for example, they have a budget advisory committee is what it's called, and they got into, beyond the budget, they got into infrastructure needs. They wanted to have reg, they wanted to understand how, how, how much we weren't funded for infrastructure, and that was outside the budget. In the City of El Monte, I saw an existing sewer committee that just focused on sewer fees, and there were some issues with, apparently with the sewer fees, the way they were collected and all of that. And that grew to sewer and water, and by the time I left, they had morphed into a full-budget advisory committee. So I've seen that happen, and so it is pretty common in some cities to have this. And certainly, we would commit to working with this group and educating and certain soliciting the feedback.
Great. Councilman Dina Hedo?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm always very careful about starting another committee, just because it can also lead to an increase in bureaucracy. I'm not saying that the idea is a flawed one, I'm just saying that there's also another side to it. One of the things that I've always mentioned is, you know, I've been in public office for quite some time. I think Councilmember Solario and I both got elected back in 2000, when, you know, his hair was black and I had more hair. So anyways, but the reality is, is that along the ways, I've seen what can hurt an organization. And at the end of the day, it's all about human capital, and what you have to be careful of is when we create an, something like this with something as sensitive as finance, is if you don't have the right human capital in there, then our staff starts to get pulled in directions that may not be consistent with the council. And that's my concern with it. And so I just want us, as we make a decision, that we're thoughtful about how we're going to move forward. So right now, I'm not sure. I want to hear more comment, I want to hear more debate on whether or not I could support this right now.
Councilman Solario, Councilman Benavides.
Thank you. Just a couple of thoughts. I agree that it's always good to have more folks, you know, look at the financials of the city, but, you know, I feel like when I was in the city council some years before, the city was understaffed, and I think it's more understaffed now, so I do worry of creating really what's a pretty heavy-duty committee here, and we're pulling them away from a lot of the other challenges that we have, or that's part of the reason why sometimes some things take so long, because folks are working on so many different projects. But having said that, I think two alternatives might be more like an ad hoc advisory committee that maybe only meets just a few times a year, and even better, at least for this year, just to kind of pilot the general idea, maybe some workshops focused in on some of these areas. But I do think too, we got to be a little bit careful of some of these subject matters because I know, once you start talking about labor contracts and medical costs, you get into collective bargaining issues, and, you know, we got to be just mindful of what we ask them to think about. So let's, let's keep that in mind. So again, workshops I'd be open to initially, and possibly also an ad hoc, but only in a very limited way with a more narrow scope, because again, we can get into some collective bargaining problems as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilman, Councilman Benavides, and then Councilman Sarmiento.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I think, I would add some of the comments, I think there is some, some opportunity to potentially have some members of the community that have expertise perhaps in this area of specifically budgets and reviewing financials. I, because a number of us still have some, a number of questions around it, one of those being the amount of, of staff resources and time, perhaps having the Economic Development Committee look at this in a bit more detail, looking at the examples. You referenced Irvine, city manager referenced, referenced a couple of other examples, and then zeroing in on the specifics, on frequency and areas of, of study or analysis, and then making a recommendation for council, I think it would be helpful. So that, that would be my, my recommendation.
I agree with that recommendation, Councilman Benavides. Councilman Sarmiento?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you for bringing this before us as well. I know that this has been a subject matter area that's been important to you, and, you know, I just had a question for staff. I know that a few years back, what we had done was, and it was odd, because what the council used to do in the past is adopt a budget, and then they'd go out to the public and explain what it was that we adopted. We inverted that in the past because we realized that it was, it should have been the other way around, and it should be the other way around, where we go to the public and we try to introduce what the budget is, is, you know, appears to be, get comments from the public, see adjustments that we need to make, and then we bring back a better, more well-drafted budget based upon the comments that we've heard from the public. So I understand that we're required to go out to the public and have certain hearings already and meetings with the public, and I know that we've done that in the past and I've attended a few, so isn't that what we do already? And the other thing is that I know something that we've spoken about at length with Mayor Protem is just to understand, not just for the public's sake, but for the council's sake, what are the accurate, what's the accurate information? What are the levels of funding we have in different funding areas? And just to get a better picture of where we are, and we've talked about an audit or a forensic audit. As we go into labor negotiations, we've discussed, you know, whether or not we're dealing with numbers that are accurate on our end, whether they're being challenged by some of our bargaining units. But we have committees that, you know, that address budget issues. Again, we have to go out to the public for public meetings and hearings, and we have some other committees that have never been formed either, so I'm worried about forming one other committee. You know, just what comes to mind is something I think that even Mayor Protem and I talked about, a citizens' review board. You know, I don't know where that is. You know, a landlord-tenant working group, I don't know where that is. So, you know, these are all very important subject matter areas. I just think, again, I think to somebody's point earlier, we have a very thinly spread staff, and I think these are all well-intentioned, I think these are thoughtful, important areas that we need to dive into, but we have to be very prudent and careful with the very limited resources we have. So, you know, I think at the very least, you know, because we're dealing not just with staff time, but this is expense as well, these are, you know, these are monies that we're expending, you know, maybe it's better spent on, you know, selecting an auditor and being robust with that auditor and, and the hearings that we go out with to the public on, when it comes to budget matters. But I know our director of finance is, is standing up, and he's eager to say something, so I'll go ahead and cede the floor to him.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, city council. Yes, actually, under the Sunshine Ordinance, we're required twice a year to provide an educational, what we do is provide an educational forum for the public in terms of budget, where we try to outline and present to them how the budget of the city is formed. Actually, it's put together. We're obviously a government agency, we're not like private sector, so we're a little bit different, complex, if you will, so we try to make, have the public understand what funds can be used for discretionary purposes, what funds cannot be used, because for the most part, the public thinks we have a, like, this pot of money that can be spent for a lot of different things. So we try to present, hopefully in a simple format, a means by which for them to understand. Now, dependent on the city manager, it's to the pleasure of the city manager how much more we get into in terms of, most city managers like getting into the budget aspect so we can receive feedback from the public in order to enhance the budget. So proposals do come back to the city council based on the various meetings that we have. Some city managers may have maybe a handful of meetings. We've had a city manager that we conducted like 13 to 15 meetings and went during, during the course of a budget cycle. So we do try to provide an educational forum that, you know, it's the pleasure of the city council if we were to form this, you know, the scope, the scope can be very complex or very simple.
Right. But to the extent that we go out and required, we're required already under the Sunshine Ordinance to go out and invite, and inform the public and the community, but I've always understood that that wasn't information out and no information in. I thought the value was, we provide the information and we get the comments back.
Yes.
Right? To me, what those responsive comments from the public are to you and your staff and the city manager's staff, that helps us refine that budget proposal better, right? And we can, we work from that document that's been augmented and, you know, refined by the public.
That's absolutely correct. We do receive comments from the public and questions from the public, and we actually take those comments in, and we actually present them to the city manager, and the city manager shows, from what I understand, a one-on-one conversations with the city council or presents them to the entire city council.
I've never seen any of those comments.
I know, I know that, you know, that, maybe in theory, that's what we're supposed to be doing, but maybe where we need to be a little bit more, you know, careful is how we do this now in practice, because I think we, you know, it's been a few years, and I think, I think there's some, not doubt, but I think what we can do, because it's such a big budget and because there are so many complex issues in it, to the extent we can get better at integrating and advising the council. And I think I do remember seeing comments from the public back when we've, when you brought the budget back to us, so maybe that's something that is, you know, could be sort of a byproduct of this discussion as well.
As part of the budget calendar, in this year's process, we have identified an opportunity for the city manager to meet with the city council on a one-on-one basis, to review basically the comments that will be presented at the community meetings. So, I mean, that's built into our process, so I would hope, you know, that would be, you know, complete, or if you will, that those comments actually get brought back.
Great, thank you, Fran. And again, I was just bringing this up as, as we want to continue to make sure that our residents are engaged and engage in probably one of the most important aspects of what the city council does. Sometimes people ask us, well, what, what does the city council do? Look, we, we're really empowered to do two, really two things, set policy and approve a budget that is recommended by our city manager. Those are the two things of our job description where we're mandated to do as council people. And so as we move forward, you know, in the past, I've asked for participatory budgeting. Again, we said we couldn't do that because we didn't have any money. You know, it's always that case, but obviously on issues like this, I, I believe they're of importance. But again, I'm only one member of the council, but I think as we move forward, we need to consider and continue to making sure that we put the residents first and having them participate as much as they possibly can, specifically with our budget. It's great when you go through a Sunshine Ordinance process, and I've been to them, they give a presentation, some people make comments, you know, there's not a lot of time to really interact, and I've asked a certain residents about that process. It hasn't been a very fluid process, and so when I've articulated about participatory budgeting, where you actually get direct input and education, and you're seeing participatory budgeting all over across the United States happening, we have yet to do that here. I asked for a pilot, I'm asking for us to make a consideration, and again, I'm only one member of the public, but I just wanted to bring that to our, to your, all of your attention, whether we want to move forward, taking it to committee or not, I'll leave that at the discretion of this council. And Councilman Solario?
I just came up with another thought and idea too, and I think maybe I heard Councilwoman Sarmiento speak to this too. There are some workshops that occur, and they've been occurring also before the Sunshine Ordinance. I'll say, hey, we didn't start doing outreach on budget only, you know, since the Sunshine Ordinance, we did it before. But maybe what we got to do is look at the way we do those outreach meetings now, so that they're more valuable to the attendees, the staff, and the council, because I think even though these workshops occur, the inputs never really come back to us, and maybe it's never substantial enough that it makes a dent into what the staff is presenting for the budget, but that might be another first thing we could do too. Let's kind of re-envision our current Sunshine meetings and processes that involves the public, and that would be an excellent starting point as well.
Maybe, Mayor Protem, just to follow up on that and follow up on the conversations that we had, do you, would you be open to having the staff bring back recommendations on how they could implement the goals and objectives that you've set out for you to do?
Oh, certainly so, yeah.
And that way, maybe they can advise us on how they can incorporate some of the priorities that you're talking about here.
And I'll take Councilman Benavides' recommendation to probably bring it back to our committee.
Okay.
Staff to recommend, and then we can review that, and then if we think it's okay, we'll bring it back to the entire council.
Or if your staff begins to work on two and gives you recommendations at your next meeting, because the budget process is now.
Correct, exactly, yes.
So if you, if we do all these back and forths, we'll really miss this budget cycle, and we have, you know, new leadership in different departments that can revisit, that can revisit how we do those workshops and outreach.
Okay, yeah, that sounds like a plan. Okay.
Do we need a motion for that?
Do we need a motion for that, Mr. City Manager? Do you want a motion for that?
I think what I'm hearing is to revisit how we, how we conduct these Sunshine-required meetings to, to make sure that they're more productive for the community that's being presented to and for the staff in terms of being able to get good feedback to present to the council, as Councilmember Sarmiento mentioned. I think I have a pretty good sense of that, and I like that recommendation because I think we can get this done with, and still be in time for, for our budget, and, and I will be looking at that. You know, this is my first run at this, so I think I could find some room for improvement just based on the feedback I received from you tonight.
Great, thank you. Next item is 85B, which is direct the clerk of the council to accept impartial analysis, arguments, and rebuttal statements for the charter amendment as proposed for special municipal election on June 5, 2018, and as provided for in the election code, authorize city council member who desire to prepare and sign argument and furthermore include information on deadlines and guidelines on city website, councilmembers Sarmiento and Benavides.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second unless there's discussion that needs to be had on this, but I think, you know, it's more, more than anything, it's directing the clerk of the council to go ahead and set a revised calendar based upon submitting the arguments in favor and against, and the rebuttals on the underlying issue that we addressed at the last council meeting regarding ward elections.
Okay. For the record, I'd like to state that the arguments in support or opposition will be due March 27, with the rebuttal statements due on April 6, and that will be part of the guidelines that will- will be part of the guidelines, um, that will be posted tomorrow morning.
Right. And this is simply to keep, uh, maintain a schedule in the event that there are favorable results on this and the, um, the writ of mandate that's outstanding is, is successful and it makes it to the, uh, makes it before the, uh, voter registrars and that's accepted. So, again, this is sort of a conditional way of keeping, um, all our, um, uh, all our steps moving forward in the event that this is met favorable.
Yeah, I just also find, like to mention that if, in the event that there are, um, four or more council members who desire to draft an argument for one side or the other, this would be the, the time to identify who would be the author or who, that you would vote to say who is going to be authorized to sign that, um, just so that we don't have any allegations that these decisions were made outside of the public meeting. So, that was part of what's here today is if, and that's just giving you the opportunity. So, if there are, um, four or more council members who are going to sign, um, the argument, you would just need to make a motion, identify who those, those people are, and the clerk would be, um, directed to accept the argument as council members do receive priority.
I think we should have the attorney write it, so I'm gonna make them, I'm gonna ask that, Councilmember Sarmiento, Councilmember Sarmiento, right?
So, and then the, uh, just to clarify, then, Madam City Attorney, did anybody else on the floor, otherwise can I?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Benavides.
City Attorney. So, to, to clarify, because if, if there were to be more than three council members signing, uh, an argument, are you suggest that then that would be, that would, uh, if there were to be more than three, it would need to be an action taken in public because of Brown Act, is that?
Yes.
Is that in essence? Okay. So, so in this, my assumption is that, uh, there were, and, and just to, to, to take a step back, the, the only reason that we're having to have, that we're having to have this conversation, because at the last meeting on March 6th, there was an action that was voted on, a resolution approved by four members of the council, uh, that the, the mayor then has opted to, uh, forego his ministerial duty, that has brought us into, uh, a situation where we're having to set up alternative dates, and so that's what we're, uh, for, uh, for these arguments if we were to have the, uh, the court allow us to, to proceed with having a, an item on the ballot on June 5th. Uh, so, so given that context, that's why we're here, why we're having this conversation. Again, going back, there were four, uh, council members who voted in support of the resolution. So, my assumption that if there were going to be four to sign an argument in favor, that it would be those four. Uh, so I, I wouldn't want to limit it, so if, if we're having to take an action, then what I would say is that the action recommendation today or motion today that those four council members that voted in support of the resolution would then be, uh, allowed to, to go ahead and sign the argument, uh, in favor if they were to choose to. Uh, so, that, I don't want to put, we haven't, we obviously haven't had this discussion. I didn't know that this was what we were, that we're gonna have to have this.
It isn't that you have to have a full-blown discussion, just you have to acknowledge in public if more than four of you are gonna make that decision, that way it's on the record. In some places, we get allegations of, well, how did they all agree on that language? Who, when did they do that? So, the most prudent way to do this is to take the action as part of the 85A, that's why it was drafted.
So, would it be a motion and that's required?
You could just make a motion and say that you, uh, as a council, authorize the members that desire to sign it. That's all you have to do if you desire to do that. If there's no, if there's not four or more, then that action would not be necessary and three could sign it.
Okay. So, I, I would just, uh, recommend to the make of the motion that it would be amended to, to state that the four that voted in favor of the resolution may sign the argument in favor, and then, again, since we haven't had discussion, I guess that would allow for us to choose to sign at a later date if we, if we do that.
I would, the only thing I would interlineate on that is that it would be at least four, because you never know, maybe a, a couple of them might change their minds and, you know, so it's, um, at least four.
Which would, which would make sense for them to do so.
And we would welcome that. We would welcome that. It would be a happy day.
So, we have a first and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
No. Four, two, great. Motion passes, want to keep us, I said I was gonna get us out of here by nine, I'm way past that now, so I feel bad. So, now we're gonna recess to the city council and convene the housing authority meeting. Uh, any public comments at this time, Madam Clerk?
I have not received any requests.
None, great. Um, approve the consent calendar items one and two, and excuse Mayor Polito, have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Great, business calendar items. Uh, number three was already considered as part of the city council agenda item. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Great, housing authority member comments, we don't have any, great, thank you. Adjourning the housing authority and reconvening the city council meeting. I'm gonna take the work studies at a session, I'm gonna do the first one, the commercial cannabis, non-retail, we'll do that study session first, and if we have still a majority of the council, then we'll move with the other two.
Good evening again. Tonight, we're going to discuss the current, just give you a general overview of, um, what we're gonna discuss tonight. The currently allowed cannabis uses, our prohibited uses. We're gonna make some general recommendations regarding where we'd like to go on this, and also, um, describe to you the individual types of licenses, uh, for cannabis uses, and make some analysis of those uses as well as recommendations. Uh, like to start out, we all know that in Santa Ana medicinal cannabis retail was, was first permitted in 2014. We've been operating now for, uh, over three years, and adult cannabis retail came on in just under three months, um, and it involves both retail sales and delivery. Uh, we see, uh, we are also allowing personal grow areas in residential neighborhoods, and that's, um, and that's only up to three plants. Okay. So, the next, a little bit of background. Non-retail, commercial, um, commercial uses include testing, which we approved tonight, as well as manufacturing or processing, uh, distribution, cultivation and micro businesses. Right now, the current status that we have are eighteen real retailers are currently operational, twenty are licensed, we have up to thirty allowed by our, um, by our ordinance. The Phase One application process has closed on March 1st, and we received fifty-three applications, uh, for the ten remaining spots. Now, the non-retail cannabis uses are a portion of a larger cannabis, the supply chain. So, it starts out with, uh, they're non-public in nature, they're typically highly technical industries, and, um, they are very similar to those uses that we already permit in industrial zones for non-cannabis. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that again, when, um, we, they're very similar to the uses that we permit in our manufacturing zones. For non-retail medicinal, or general retail in terms of locational requirements, are, we're going to maintain that thousand-foot boundary that we have for, uh, retail uses, all of our retail uses. It's a buffer from our sensitive land uses. We're fixing that, similar to we, what we, um, recommended and you adopted for the testing, we're fixing that, um, as the map that was defined at the time that Measure BB was adopted. So, that will be consistent in, and they are allowed in the M1 and M2 zones. We're not proposing any cap on the number of permits issued, and we are not, um, asking for any, um, distance requirements between the types of uses. Cultivation is the first type of use I'd like to talk about. Uh, we are recommending only allowing it indoor and only permitting it, um, again, within the industrial districts. It is, it's, it's expected to be a, um, we're not expecting, expecting to be as competitive in cultivation as we may be in other types of uses. Probably what we can anticipate seeing are boutique, um, growers and growers that are related to some of our individual cannabis businesses that are pre-existing. We won't be able to compete with the large greenhouse areas that you'll find up in places like Solvang and Northern California. But we will, um, we can expect them to be able, us to be able to do indoor, um, growing facilities. They are very resource-intensive, um, they have, um, green waste is one of the issues that's very, um, that's a concern to the state and is very, um, is very strictly regulated. Manufacturing is the next, um, use that we'd like to talk about. Manufacturing, um, typically, it's a very small footprint. Uh, we think about manufacturing, they're usually very large uses, um, however, we're generally, um, we're looking at about five hundred to twenty-five hundred square feet in terms of a manu, many manufacturing uses. They also may be done in, in conjunction with other, other uses and are generally, um, divided into two categories, volatile and non-volatile use. It's very similar to our existing zoning categories for industrial uses in general. They have a highly educated workforce, they are generally require a large investment in high-tech, um, and high-tech equipment, and, um, they would be generating two types of revenues, business-to-business tax, as well as the gross receipt fees that we're proposing now, uh, for, uh, the product itself. Some concerns we have are odor concerns as well as fi, uh, fire safety. Uh, we, we're very lucky to be contracting with OCFA because they've been very proactive in the cannabis industry and have developed some, um, manufacturing guidelines that will address some of the, um, hazardous materials concerns. Distribution, distribution is, is, um, typically, we think about, it's not delivery, it's, it's not mean, uh, it doesn't mean anything that you'd be distributing, passing out samples, that type of thing. What we're talking about is the anytime, the state has set it up so that anytime cannabis is moved from one spot to another, so from the cultivator to the manufacturer, it has to go through a distributor, and from the manufacturer and then to the retail. So, each, on each leg of those journeys, um, it has to, has to be done by a, um, licensed They can be, and again, they can be, um, transmitted on either a wholesale or to consumers or to the retail component. Testing, we discussed testing earlier and, um, you have now adopted it. Microbusiness, we're including this, this is the last type of license that the state holds. We are not recommending, um, we are not recommending entering into this part of the business. License holders mostly, because this type of license holder allows you to do the full range of, um, of the industry, so you could do, um, retail sales, cultivation, distribution and manufacturing. And for cities that want to limit the number of retail facilities that you have, um, it's not recommended that you have a, um, microbusiness license because retail is a component of that mi, that range of licenses or range of services that the license provides. So, uh, because of that, we are not recommending that this use be, uh, that this license use be approved. And so, now we're on to the next step. On April 3rd, um, we'll be having the second reading on the ordinance for legalizing testing of cannabis products, and we will be bringing back to you a first reading, uh, on cultivation, manufacturing and distribution, depending on the input, um, that we receive here tonight. If those schedules work, move forward, we're looking at, um, spring, uh, 2018, beginning of May, I believe May 7th would be the first, um, times that, uh, the testing licenses would actually be operable, and then summer, where we would be getting, right now, um, we are going into Phase Two, as we talked about earlier, in terms of the existing retail licenses that we have, and so we're expecting those uses to be able to be onboard, the last ten uses onboard by summer 2018, and then late summer, early fall to allow the remainder of those uses, um, to be operational. If you have any questions?
Great. Thank you, Candy, to bring it back to the council. Comments?
I have.
Um, do we have any comments on this item?
No, we have not received any.
Just really a study session, we can't really go back and forth, and so it's for us to give, um, opportunity to the staff, come back, and then I'm assuming our staff will go back out to the operators and have conversations with them and others that have interests based on our input so that we can come to some middle ground when we do come back again, um, as you're indicating, late, late summer, early fall with an ordinance. So, comments, Councilmember Benavides?
I do have some, some questions, uh, staff. So, the, with these other uses, uh, how does the, is there any implication to the, the current, the existing or approved either medicinal or adult-use retail? How does that, uh, or have we identified whether there will be any type of, uh, priority given or, or process to be able to? We, we have the whole process for the other, for the retail.
Mm-hmm.
Are we looking at something similar and will, again, if they're currently permitted and/or on a waitlist, have we clarified how that's going to, uh, impact the selection or, or is there going to be selection? I guess we don't have necessarily a cap on, on most of these.
The process will be very similar to the process, um, described for testing. Um, they'll be able to do, uh, they'll be asked to do both a registration permit, which, um, says that your location approves the general location and one of your operators, and then they'll also be required to go through the regulatory safety, uh, permit process, which requires background checks. But there will be no merit criteria in terms of selecting operators because, once again, we don't have a cap on it.
Uh, the, so a couple of the questions, with, you mentioned odor as a, as a, one of the things that would be, need to be addressed. Do we have that figured out? How we're going to address that, how that's being addressed elsewhere?
Um, we'll be using state standard, we'll be meeting state standards that address that and looking for best practices that will be adopted and reviewing and implementing it.
Uh, I, I will have a few additional questions here, but then also would like to, uh, set up a, a follow-up, uh, meeting with staff to be able to do a deeper dive, so.
Oh, certainly.
So, if we can, uh, if, Corke, if you can help me, uh, schedule that, so I'll, I'll go ahead and, and.
Thank you, Councilmember Benavides. Councilman Dinajero, followed by Councilman Sarmiento, and then Councilman Solario.
I just have a very quick couple of comments. Uh, first, uh, I just want to make sure, in your, in your packet, it says that you're looking towards a first reading by April. Is that correct?
Yes, we are.
Okay. And so, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, we move forward and expedite. I would like to be able to vote by May. I would like to be able to vote by May or first meeting in June. I don't want to wait till the fall, because things might change up here. So I want to be able to set the direction early, so that we can get... we can start moving on that. So if we need more staff, then at that point, I would also ask that you all take a look at some consultants that can help you expedite this, so that we can move forward. That's all I have to say.
If I may comment, Madam Mayor Potem?
Yes.
To... just to clarify for Councilwoman Dinajero and all the rest of the council, what we want to do is actually get this before you as early as possible, hopefully get this approved. Because what we want to do is, before the end of July, we'd like to have something ready to put on the ballot to codify some of the fee agreements that we're recommending here. So we'd like to make sure, you know, the council's comfortable and, in fact, has approved whatever uses ultimately get approved for that purpose. So for that purpose, we're going to be pushing to get it done as quickly as possible. Now, the actual processing, we don't know how that's going to work, but we're certainly not going to have any caps. We believe that the geography of the situation will sort of dictate a natural cap. They're only allowed in certain zones, they have to be away from sensitive uses. What I believe will happen is, the existing dispensaries have indicated... a lot of them, if not all of them, have indicated a desire to get several of these permits. They want to do a little bit of manufacturing, a little bit of perhaps cultivation, but it'd be boutique. And then you might have some folks that want to come in and just do manufacturing, separate from the retailers that are already in town. They might want to come in and just do manufacturing, or do cultivation, or combination of those two, and distribution, for example. So in terms of the cap, I wanted to ensure that, that we don't propose a cap, but we think that ultimately, there's only going to be so many that can fit within our areas. And we anticipate that type of a mix, either folks that are retailers, that are going to be vertically integrated, that's what they call it vertically, and then you're going to have other folks that aren't going to do retail, that are going to focus on, A, the manufacturing, or cultivation, and distribution.
Great. Councilman Sarmiento?
Thank you, Mayor Potem. And so I'm way behind this curve, because I haven't seen any of the lead-up to this, just because I've been sort of outside the discussion. But, you know, I think the point I was going to make is the one I think you brought up, Mr. City Manager, about being in compliance with Prop 218, Prop 26, making sure that we eventually go down that path and make sure the voters decide this. We can do this by, you know, sort of a creature of state law, which is a development agreement, being able to create negotiated terms. But after a while, it just... it's going to become very dangerous for us to continue proceeding that way. So I do think the prudent thing to do is to go... to go out and put this on the ballot for the voters to decide ultimately. Again, for me, you know, taking this next step, I always want to make sure that we've finished what we did, what we started with Measure BB. Let's not lose sight of the enforcement for those rogue, unpermitted shops that continue to be out there. And hopefully, you know, funding sources from some of these new industry operators will provide additional enforcement dollars, so we can make sure that we, you know, have nothing but permitted licensed operators in town. The other question on moving to sort of this non-retail, and I guess the supply side of the industry, is that you really don't have the secondary impacts that the retail side has. So I can see why there's, you know, why we don't need to have buffers between the businesses themselves. So, you know, that's obviously, you know, helpful. But one thing that we didn't do during the first round of, you know, Measure BB and the retail industry was just talking about community benefits, you know, and seeing how this could be a job creator for us as well. And, you know, there are opportunities that, you know, San Ana's turning into more... we don't want it to turn into a consumer community. We want it to turn into a community that's going to understand this industry. The industry is going to grow. It's going to grow nationwide. And so to the extent folks can continue to... or can participate, maybe not continue, because there really has been an effort to involve and, you know, make the operators responsible for creating jobs, training, investing in the community, and being real community partners. The idea would be that residents would have not just employment opportunities, but equity shares in this. So to the extent those models have been out throughout the state and in other states, I think there really is an opportunity here for this new industry to come in and have responsibility thrust upon them. You know, they're going to have a benefit by operating in the city. There are going to be impacts, and to the extent that residents can benefit from this new industry and its opportunities for jobs and upward mobility, I mean, that's something I think that all of us can get behind, you know, and the industry, I'm sure, would welcome that. More than anything, they'd want to welcome being able to employ residents that live in the city, train folks that live in the city, for them to provide, you know, living wages, benefits, you know, good, quality-paying jobs. I mean, that's what we're looking for, for our folks here in town. So please have that as part of the package when it comes back to us. You know, I'm sure that, you know, when you go out and speak to the industry, they'll be receptive to that as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sarmiento. Councilman Solorio?
Yes, thank you. And like Councilmember Benavides, I too would like a follow-up staff meeting or two, as this progresses. But a few initial thoughts. I'm generally okay with having no caps on these items, with the exception of cultivation. I personally feel that most of these other categories do have good-paying jobs with potential and manufacturing, and I see really strong economic capability. But I do fear that we're going to replace a lot of our advanced manufacturing facilities and replace them with cultivation, which often really is just heavy on lights, heavy on water, but with minimal staffing. So I'd like staff, for example, to instead consider... definitely for the existing dispensaries, I do see onsite opportunities for them that should be prioritized, because it could really leverage their marketing, their economic potential. But for opportunities offsite, maybe putting a cap on those. Maybe it's 30, maybe it's 50. I'd like to hear from the industry as well, what a reasonable cap might be. As well as, I think there's the reality that because this is something that's heavy on the need for lighting and water, a lot of this activity really in Masco is going to occur in the desert areas, Northern California, and not as much in urban areas. So that's a thought. With respect to microbusinesses, the way I look at that is not that we're not recommending that, but at this time. So it just, you know, maybe five, 10 years down the road, as the industry matures, that might be something to think about. Or as I understand, the lounge concepts kind of go hand-in-hand with microbusinesses, and maybe we're ready to go down that path or not. Again, I'd like to hear from the industry on thoughts on that, even though staff at this point is not recommending it. I also want to see that the prior actions that we took in terms of the revenue generated from this industry, that we have the same formula and idea that it go... that the revenue go to enforcement in youth programs, especially, you know, drug prevention and things of that sort. Then I agree with Councilmember Sarmiento, that even though this may not be a competitive process, per se, on the whole, that we still ask for local hire, labor peace agreements, and partnerships with the community, if possible. And then finally, and I'll mention it here, even though I think this also applies to the current process we have underway for the adult-use newcomer applications, I think there was quite a bit of council conversation when we were discussing the merit applications to only have one application per property. And, you know, I've already have heard many concerns about staff thus far not really moving in that direction, and it's unfortunate. I know I've talked to the city attorney's office and would like to follow up about ways to still consider all applications that we've received, but to somehow follow the direction that council had provided on that. And similarly here, I don't want to see scenarios where, just because we leave it ambiguous, that we take in multiple applications per site. That would be problematic, and even though we may not envision it now, it's a very creative industry, and I want to make sure that there isn't that kind of confusion, that this go around. And to the extent possible, on the existing applications, that we work very closely with our city attorney's office on how to address this issue of multiple applications per property. Maybe it's... they can be considered, you know, at a time, not all at once. So those are my initial thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Solorio. Councilwoman Benavides?
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Just a brief comment. Well, one request and then a comment. One is, if you could provide to council, so we have enough time to review the overall... if, to the degree that you have established any information, ordinances already spelled out, or more of the technical requirements, one of those things specifically is any type of fees that are being recommended, the tax structures and that type of thing. And to that point, again, to be consistent with some of the other conversation we've had, is wanting to make sure that we are competitive, looking at where we are in comparison to other cities that are permitting these types of uses. We're talking about this and considering this, because we see that, one, is it's been approved at state level, but we also want to... want to be able to take advantage of the revenue, potential revenue generation. However, we can't make the assumption that the businesses will come here if we're not... if we're out of line with other cities, other municipalities. So want to make sure that we're being very intentional about drawing these types of businesses. If we're going through this whole process of identifying zones, of spelling regulations, that we also set ourselves up to be successful and to be the place to be able to do this, have this type of quality business. Businesses done in a quality way, so that we do, in fact, generate revenue. So I'd be interested in seeing, getting a chance to see kind of the rationale, and if we're recommending something different than what we have in the retail for some of the other... these other different types of uses.
Thank you, Councilwoman Benavides. I'll make some very quick comments, because I agree with a lot of stuff that's already been said, so I won't repeat it. But for, in particular, the first question that I would ask our staff is, one, do you... based on your timeline here, I'm assuming it's because you have capacity issues, why are you going to the late summer, early fall, to allow for the other uses, which is manufacturing, distribution, and cultivation? Is that a... why are you pushing it so late versus trying to move us, as Councilwoman Dinajero said, possibly May, early June?
Well, we will have the ordinance to you on April 3rd. We're talking about second reading on April 17th. The application process, just the structure of it, takes about 45 days. And then we'll be processing plus 45 days plus, if we don't do that. And then we'll be processing those... getting those applications processed. Then they have to come in and they have to do modifications to the buildings. That involves inspections. And ultimately, then they would be operational. So a lot of it depends on working with the businesses. It was a conservative... that's a fairly conservative estimate.
Okay.
But that's what we're looking at.
Yes, Mr. City Manager?
No, I just wanted to echo that I will... staff can attest that I've been pushing for us to get the... this done as quickly as possible. But I wanted to comment, based on what I'm hearing here, particularly the community benefits comments, as I'm thinking here, and I haven't had a chance to talk with my staff, how we can get this done in a non-competitive fashion. Originally, when we were looking at caps for all these different uses, we were looking at 20, and that was sort of a number that I inherited. We were looking at a competitive process when we first brought to you this... these uses to you, I guess, in December. And we had a criteria that had points for job creation, investment, and all of that. As I'm thinking here, we might have to rethink how we...
Well, we still have the tool of the operational agreement. And part of the components of the operational agreement include a community benefit plan, which commits them to doing certain... to doing certain things. And that was where we...
Is it possible for...
In the initial... in the retail applications, we included the...
Maybe you guys could include that still as an option?
Yes, that we will still be doing an operational agreement, and it can...
Because I'm not finished with my... I'm not finished with my comments, if I can. I just thought you had that one issue, so... because I know we want to get out. You can just let me finish. So if... the second thing that I had, as it pertained to this issue, for me, is as I look at this industry, and I've probably been one that's been very critical, more because of a process, but I do think we have an opportunity that, as we've learned, I would ask the industry to continue to... continue to communicate with our staff and provide as many white papers as possible, best practices, have some roundtable discussions, to get, you know, the best information as possible before this ordinance comes before us. And I know council members are going to be meeting with the various staff, so that we're not up here cutting and dicing and trying to last minute. And I think this is where sometimes we kind of get, in many respects, you know, we fail, because, you know, it's coming at the 11th hour, and that... the last thing that we want is for all these uses and information to be coming to us at the 11th hour, and we're all trying to figure out, how are we going to make these changes? So I think we have enough time to have communication with the industry, have communication with the city council, bring something that, you know, is very favorable to everyone, and then we can make whatever final touches we need to by this, you know, May, you know, late summer position... timeline that you're providing to us. I also, you know, as we're updating our general plan, and I've spoken to you about this, Candida, about creating an innovations district, this is a perfect opportunity, as we look at manufacturing and distribution. There's various other types of businesses that are tied to this industry, and so there's a lot of accelerators, a lot of startups. It would be very fascinating for us to figure out, within the distribution side and the manufacturing side, to look at making sure that if we have no caps, that, you know, they're not like the retail component, where they create, you know, the retail or the medicinal, where there's a lot more, you know, attention needed with our staff. These other manufacturing and distribution, you know, I think they will run smoothly on their own, but there's an opportunity for us to leverage this industry, in particular with the other, with whether it's marketing, whether it's other businesses, such as startups, to bringing them together in a cluster, so that we could have an innovations district. And even with our high-tech and medical, trying to figure that out, I think, would be important for us as we move forward, as we want to make sure that this industry is successful. Secondly, as well, I would just ask for us to also look at the opportunity, as we talk about community benefits, you know, certainly, the revenue that is needed for the city, and why we're trying to move quickly with this. I would just take caution, as we look at how much revenue is being generated, and I think we have these expectations that cultivation's going to bring this much money, or distribution's going to bring this much money, manufacturing. Look, the city of Bellflower had the opportunity to do a cannabis fiscal economic impact study, and they hired RSG, where they were able to show the city, look, if you have no limit on manufacturing or distribution, or you have a limit on your retail, this is how much money you will be able to generate within three to five years. I think it's important, not just for the industry, but important for us to know what these expectations are, because if we think that the marijuana industry is just going to solve the financial problems of our city, we're mistaken by that. And that's the last thing that we want to do, is continue to, you know, hey, we want this industry here, because, you know, we're going to tax them and take all their money. Obviously, you know, that's unrealistic for us to just think that that one industry's going to be able to solve our problems. And so we can't continue to think that way, but we need to make sure that we're able to understand, within three to five years, if we were to do a study like this, this is what our expectations are. You know, but to go over the top now and just assume that they're going to bring X, Y, and Z dollars, and this is why we're choosing to tax them or limit, it... Personally, I don't believe that is the direction that we should take. I think we need to be more proactive and be realistic about how much revenue they actually can generate for the city. And so those are just my comments right now on this. I look forward to working with the industry to get some of those best practices and any white papers that are available, so that we can have a more robust conversation and have an ordinance that makes the most sense for this city. And with that, is there any more comments on this? this city. And with that, is there any more comments on this item? If not, I think you guys have your guys' direction on this and meetings that will be scheduled fairly soon as we move forward. Because of the interest of time, I think my colleagues want to postpone the two work study, the other two other work study sessions. No? Just very quickly? Okay, Rob. No, they're saying...
Yeah, no, I think, I think the Willow Wick, I think Willow Wick is very brief, right?
Willow Wick is very brief. Okay, go ahead, Rob. Just come, Willow Wick is very brief.
You have two minutes, Rob.
All right.
Two minutes, and I'm timing.
I'll give you my two minutes, five minutes during my speaking times. You've got an additional...
William, we're going to have to go to next month. Sorry, buddy.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and council members. Just wanted to give you an update tonight on the Willow Wick, progress on Willow Wick. As you know, there's the, okay. Back in December, we had a joint meeting of the two city councils. And then since then, staff from both cities, and our group has included Mark Morley, myself, Candida Neal, and Vince Fregoso, as well as reps from our city attorney's office, and Garden Grove staff. We've met a couple of times. We had a conference call with the city managers. And we have identified some recommended next steps. We're giving you this in a workshop format tonight. We're proposing to bring forward an agreement between the two cities at your next meeting. And what we're basically proposing is that we move forward with some planning effort for the site. We would jointly fund, the two cities would jointly fund an economic advisory consultant, and then a community facilitator. The community facilitator, you've had some updates in this in your notable communications, would be out meeting with the community, particularly trying to involve communities in the area and tailoring that, the solicitation of that input to the communities. At the same time, we would, that those two processes would be going on, we would develop a, an RFP for a master developer. We think we can save some time by doing these things jointly. That was a suggestion that came out of a conference call with our two respective city managers. And then the other thing that the agreement concludes is a recommendation to form a steering committee, three council members from each city. Not exactly sure what the function of that is going to be, but it would be used as a sounding board as we move through this process, which is going to take some time. And again, our next step would be to, we have the draft agreement now, would be bring it to this body on the 3rd, and then Garden Grove would be scheduled to take it a week later to their council. Be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Rob, just very quickly, do you need us to make a recommendation to these three options now? Do you want us to make this committee? I guess I'm asking, what are you asking for us tonight?
A discussion item. If some of these are things that, you know, the majority of you feel strongly against, for example, we're sort of checking in and saying, are we going on the right track? This is sort of what the two staffs in the two cities have...
Okay.
Have decided to move forward with, and just checking in before we bring it to you in April.
I think you guys are moving in the right direction.
Let's do it. If you can do it tomorrow, it'd be that much better. We've been waiting. It's a great opportunity. Let's pursue it. Let's do it.
Councilman Solario?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. Willow Wick is in my ward.
Put the timer on.
Yes, put the timer on, no problem. Willow Wick is in my ward, so I'd love to be on the steering committee. That's number one. Number two, I think if we hire a master developer, I don't see why we couldn't ask them to hire an economic advisory consultant and a community facilitator as part of their team. And I know in brainstorm with our city manager, that actually was a creative thought, that oftentimes you could get a master developer that can absorb a lot of these functions and would gladly do it as some, as part of some scope of work.
Yeah, the reason we've suggested this is that we felt that we could get that process started while we're selecting the developer, starting to meet with the community. There may be some more community work to do that I think the developer could pick up that cost, absolutely.
But you could make the argument vice versa, that you can get the developer going, and they can do all this stuff, and...
The other thing on the economic advisory, I would say, is that I think both cities would want someone advising us that's independent from the developer entity, that I think would argue for hiring the economic advisory consultant.
Possibly. But part of that is process. I mean, you could say that to the master developer, give us three options of economic advisory consultants, and the staff or the ad hoc committee chooses. But I know here we're just brainstorming, so those are just my thoughts. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Councilman Sarmiento?
Yeah, just briefly, on, you know, on the flip side, on the community facilitator, to the extent that we're still conceptualizing, we're still talking at a very high level, the last thing I'd want is for us to alarm, you know, some of the residents in the community members around the site. In other words, they may think, hey, this open space that I moved to, and the reason why I bought my house was because I could have a view of the golf course behind it, now is going to be taken away from me, it's going to be intensified. So, just, you know, if we, if we do go down that path of retaining a community facilitator, let's just make sure that the way this information is presented, it's very non-committal, it's just more to get thoughts, and, you know, more to get opinions and comments from those in the area. But the last thing I want is to alarm folks and to think that, you know, their quality of life is going to be eroded, it's going to be changed, and this is a done deal, and, you know, and that type of thing. So, you know, I just want us to be real sensitive, whoever it is that we retain.
And the, in the meetings that we've had with Garden Grove, we have emphasized that. I think to take 100 acres of open space and then do whatever is ultimately going to be done with it, whatever that ultimate thing is, is going to have a lot of open space. And I think that's the whole purpose of the community facilitation part, is to involve those communities and get those things listed as goals for the project.
The difference between us and Garden Grove is we're going to have to absorb and deal with the impacts, right? And deal with the responses from the residents. Garden Grove isn't.
That's exactly right.
So, you know, they're just going to see the revenues and the benefits. So, it's up to us to make sure that we are very careful as we go down this path, so.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Sarmiento. Any more comments? If not, I think you have some...
Move the item. Thank you.
Yep, there's no, yeah, no, it's a work study, but I think you're moving in the right direction, Rob.
Thank you for letting me present.
Thank you so very much. You went over your two minutes, but it's okay. Next, we're going to city manager comments. Mr. Godinez.
I'll try to go through these kind of quickly. Wanted to announce that we had an ABC grant, and the police department, our, our police department had the best stats when it came to administering this grant. We had 2017, 18, 20 people were cited, three people were booked, a total of 23 arrests. And we probably maximized that grant better than anybody else in the state. So, to give you a brief, I think it's something we could be proud of. Second note, I wanted to just, to just inform everybody that there is an effort, it's called Map Your Neighborhood. And it's a small group workshop where neighbors can work together to come up with a neighborhood response plan. This is a, an emergency response plan in case of a disaster. We have staff from the police department and planning and building agency that have worked with some of the neighbors on disaster preparedness. And there's a training for Santa Ana property managers on Map Your Neighborhood that will be held this coming Tuesday, March 28th, in the Public Works Training Room from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Willard Neighborhood was the first to participate, so kudos to them. And last, I just wanted to announce that the police department has launched a teen program. And the goal of the program is to increase understanding and mutual respect between the Santa Ana youth and the city police department. And also, we'd like to start getting people interested in working for the police department. So, anyhow, right now, we have an academy that was concluded on Tuesday, March 13th. 22 students from Seagres High School graduated and received a certificate. There were two sessions last year. We want to have three sessions this year. And I think it's something we look forward to.
Thank you, Mr. Godinez. Next is council member comments, and I'll go with Councilman Sarmiento.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I just wanted to thank staff for all the good work tonight that you all did. I appreciate it very much. I know there was a lot of, a lot of information to present to us. I also wanted to thank, you know, some of my colleagues who were here. This Saturday, we hosted the hearing that Judge Carter held on the homelessness matter, and the homelessness over at the Riverbed. So, I think there were some very good things that came out of that. And I know the mayor was here, Councilman Solario, and I were here, and mayors and council members from other cities that are being impacted. Unfortunately, I didn't see a lot of South County mayors and council members, which was disappointing. But, but there was some very good information that the judge shared, and he did single out the problem of dumping that we've been dealing with for many, many years. And I think he called it out very strongly. And he put everybody on notice that if other cities come and dump their folks here in our city, they're looking at a potential federal violation. And he had a U.S. attorney here that was standing by his side when he made those, I don't want to call them threats, but they were admonitions, I think, that he made for everybody to understand. We know it's been going on for a long time. We know that the demographic of the homeless population is very different from the demographic here that we have in the city. So, it's very obvious. So, I'm very heartened by that. I'm heartened by the fact that he's looking at Irvine as a site for, you know, some temporary shelters or permanent shelters, Huntington Beach, and Laguna, Nigal, I believe. So, to the extent that he realizes Santa Ana's done more than its share, it's very, I'm very optimistic by the comments he made and by the path that he's going down. So, that was one. My last comment was, you know, and I wanted to thank and congratulate the chief. I know that I wasn't at, at the tail end of the last meeting to congratulate him on his appointment as a permanent police chief. And so, kudos to you. I really appreciated your comments when I saw you at the swearing in, and you said that you're here to protect and represent all the members of the, of the city. You know, residents, you know, documented, undocumented, everybody in town. So, I really am glad that you opened up with those words because unfortunately, you know, we see a lot of other cities that don't really understand the type of policing that you do. Bad actors are, are held responsible here in town. This is a lawless community. And to the extent that maybe we share that, and Mr. City Manager, I'll implore you to do that, maybe what we do is reassure our residents and even our neighboring cities that, you know, we respect the rule of law. And because we are a sanctuary city doesn't mean that we forgive, you know, people who are bad actors. In fact, what it does, I think it enhances our policing skills, and it protects everybody in the community. So, we just want to message that because unfortunately, there's, there's a lot of misinformation and misrepresentation of that. So, I ask you if you could go ahead and share that with all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sarmiento. Councilman Benavides?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Usually, we end up, we start at the other, at the other end?
I do things a little differently.
Yeah, okay. I was going to say, you just caught me off guard. A couple of comments. Wednesday, I thank you, Councilman Sarmiento, for your comments with regard to the fact embracing and reminding the community that we are a sanctuary city by choice. And the purpose for that is to ensure and communicate to all residents that they are safe within the city of Santa Ana, and that our law enforcement will exercise their duties and responsibilities responsibly and in dignified way to everybody. And it is unfortunate some of the actions that some of our neighboring cities are taking. And it's very disappointing. I know some of the folks and my colleagues counterparts over in Los Alamos, and I was surprised, taken aback, and very disappointed by the actions that some of them have taken. A couple of things, we have got the good news that we were able to appoint our youth service supervisor, and I, our new youth service supervisor, and I saw her here earlier this evening, Cheryl Eberly, from, previously from our library. So, wanted to congratulate her in that role and position. And I wanted to ask Mr. City Manager, and if you could help us to, this is a new role, new position. We're excited and thrilled. We've been talking about and anticipating that role, so we can have this liaison, both working internally but also outwardly facing, you know, into the community. So, if the council can be brought up to speed on, on, up to date on some of the focus areas for this new role, this position, how we are looking to roll it out, engage with the community, goals, objectives, and ways that we can, again, get the other, both that school district, nonprofit, community, other youth-serving organizations, to be able to begin to connect and work together towards a broader, and a deeper, more meaningful impact with our youth, and youth-serving communities. That would be great. My last comment is that by the time we meet up next, we would have had Palm Sunday, Good Friday, Easter, and the Jewish calendar Passover experience. I just want to, it's a very meaningful time of the faith calendar here in the next couple of weeks. I just want to encourage everybody to take that opportunity to reflect, to enjoy family, to enjoy Easter, to enjoy the, reflect on the opportunity of new beginnings, and spring as well. Just encourage everybody to, again, make, enjoy the Easter, an Easter season. With that, have a great night. Thank you.
Councilman, Mr. Viegas. I was going to say Juan. Councilman Juan, Councilman Viegas.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. An update from the OCFA. We have a new fire chief as of last Thursday, and that is Brian Fennessey from San Diego. I want to welcome him to the OCFA as a board member. Also, OCFA's urban search and rescue teams are preparing tonight to journey up north again for the possible flooding that's taking place, all the storms hitting up north. And if you remember back in January, 8th through 9th, the, our teams were up there helping in Santa Barbara County with the mudslides where 21 people lost their lives. So, we want to wish our, our members from the OCFA well, and we wish them a safe return. And we recognize their, their, their good work that they do. On another note, I have a question for the city manager. Can you give me an update on the ethics policy enforcement I've been asking for for the last few months? Where are we with that? Because that's been going on for a long time.
Yes, Councilman Viegas. The, the committee reviewed the draft, gave some input, and we're supposed to bring it back for the committee to review again. As soon as the committee's ready to recommend it to the council, we'll move forward. But we did actually have an item at the last committee meeting.
Okay. So, it's, when can we expect it?
I'd have to, I couldn't give you a date right now. I'd have to...
Or do I have to call I-85A or something, so he can...
No, we'll give you...
He could do that, too.
We'll do, we'll give you an update. Let me, let's me, let me get together with my staff to figure out exactly what would be a good estimate, so we can give you a good estimate. I can't give you one right now on the fly.
All right. Thank you, sir.
It's a joint project between the city attorney's office, and the city clerk, and my office. So, it's the three of us working on it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Viegas. Councilman Solario?
Thank you. A couple of things I want to thank our city manager, our police chief, and others that have been working with the county on the homelessness crisis. I think we're making good headway with the judge's involvement, and he's pretty much okay to green light on the city working with the county on moving folks from the Plaza de Flags to more humane areas. So, that's very positive. And then there's other items as well. I know in the near future, I'm sure we'll bring something back to the city count, to the city council for, for a formal update. But I know we're working internally on an action plan and various other items. So, I do want to thank all the staff involved, including the quality of life team. I know our deputy city manager, Robert Cortez, has been working with that as well, and it's been successful. And then, secondly, and finally, March 31st is Cesar Chavez Day. And in this community, we've been celebrating that on a annual basis, and this year falls on a Saturday. And we all thought it was time to beautify Cesar Chavez Campesino Park a little bit. And with the Santa Anita Neighborhood Association, we've been working on a program of activities and beautification for that day. So, I think it's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and, you know, all my colleagues are invited. Thank you. And the public.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Solario. I will be very quick, and then we're going to do, adjourn this meeting in memory of Hassan Hagani, our former executive director of planning and building. But first, I do want to thank my colleagues, for those who were able to attend on Saturday, obviously with short notice. I already had a commitment. I sit on the local government commission, had a board meeting and conference, and a reason why I wasn't able to be here. But this morning at 6:50 AM, I had the opportunity to walk with Judge Carter throughout the civic center and share with him the plan that myself and Councilman Viegas had presented to the council, and hoping that we can continue to have conversations with our judge. But I was excited to hear what happened here in chambers with the various cities and conversations that have been had. And then as well, with his leadership, you know, definitely, I don't think we would be where we're at here today, or even having this conversation, if it wasn't for the leader. or even having this conversation if it wasn't for the leadership of Judge Carter. So, if any elected official or anyone else tries to take credit, obviously, we all know where that credit should be given to, and it should be given to Judge Carter for being bold and really, you know, holding the feet to the fire of elected officials, because ultimately, at the local level, we have a responsibility, and more importantly, obviously, we know that the county of Orange is responsible for, for this job, but they can't do it alone. They have to work with the cities. And so, we have to be a partner with the county. Obviously, in the past, I have been very judgmental, and at the same time have, you know, tried to really hold them accountable, you know, for the responsibility that they have. But with that being said, I think as the judge has brought us together, I think it's, it's time to let bygones be bygones and figure out a way how we all can work together to help address this issue. But in particular, I think it's important for us to realize that the judge said enough is enough. Cities can no longer continue to dump their homeless here in this city of Santa Ana. And so, we're, we're, I'm happy to hear that we have someone that's supportive of that, because we've been saying this for years, that we've had enough, we're not going to build another shelter, other cities have to do their fair share. But at the same time, we have to manage what we currently have out here in our streets. Our residents want us to take action. They don't want to hear that it's the county's responsibility. We need to do what we possibly can to address the street homelessness that's occurring throughout our city, and do it in a way that, one, it's compassionate, but at the same time, making sure that we have the facilities to take them. Obviously, our police department can't do their job and cite them if we, they don't have beds to put them at. So, we, we're really put in a very difficult position when our community is saying, why isn't your police officers arresting people, doing X, Y, and Z? Obviously, we can't do that if there's not beds for those folks to, to put them in, in various locations throughout the city. But there's a plan on its way, and I'm hopeful, and, and I really believe that the county is trying to do all it can now to work with the city to figure this out. The second thing that I wanted to mention as well is that, wanted to congratulate our chief as we talk about our police department. I had to leave, we had a council meeting, and so I left. I didn't get to hear your remarks. I needed to prepare. But congratulations. Look forward to continuing to work, to working with you and the good work that you are doing. And then as well, wanted to just inform our residents, SB 1, I, I've heard over the weekend that there were students going out, you know, canvassing about not supporting SB 1. I'm not sure if our students or our residents even know how much money we are getting back to this community to fix our roads, to do other transportation projects. It's in the millions of dollars. I think we received this year alone over 5.8, but I'm not certain about that number. But in the next several years, we're going to receive millions of, of dollars coming to this community. And so, we need to do everything that we possibly can, because we don't have money for our general fund to fix our streets. SB 1, those are our tax dollars. They need to cut, they need to stay here. We need to do everything we possibly can not to repeal that, because it will be detrimental to our city, because we do not have the funds to fix our roads. And this is how we're actually doing it now with these funds. And so, it's imperative that we continue to support SB 1 and making sure that we can have communications with our constituents and why SB 1 is important for Santa Ana. And so, if we could have some kind of communication going out in our next newsletter, water bill, whatever, how much money's being generated, what are those projects? I think it's important for us to share that. And then as well, the Orange County Council of Government is having its general assembly here this Thursday. Welcome my colleagues to attend. I know they sent various emails out to, to council members and hoping, well, I, I represent, I'll be there, obviously, if you all can't be there, I'll be there on behalf of the city. And then, as well, I wanted just to share, and I know Councilman Solario attended, there was a vegan pop-up at a bakery, and I have to tell you that this is, even though I'm a vegan, and I'm not trying to, you know, impose my, 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 my lifestyle on folks, but what I can tell you that it's a momentum and it's a movement that there are so many people here in our city that really want more healthier options. When I got there at 11:45, I thought, there's only going to be a few people. I'll get my food, I'll leave. I show up, I can't find parking, I got to go park in the neighborhood. I, I get to the facility, I have to wait in line 30 minutes to get some food. They had over 1,000 people there. It was quite amazing. And so, I just wanting to share that, something that we should consider to provide more opportunities of healthy living and experiences to our residents. Obviously, there was a need we had. And the other important thing is that we have various people from other communities coming to Santa Ana, which was, they, they were pretty amazed, whether they were from Garden Grove or Laguna or Newport Beach. Some people were from Los Angeles. I was talking to everyone, because I was super excited, and I wanted to know, where are these people coming from? So, it was great to, to see. And then I just, again, too, wanted to briefly just talk about the school shootings that we've had across the country. And I know that there's a rally this weekend at Centennial Park, that many council members and school board members will be attending. But also, the recent, the recent explosions with packages in San Antonio, and for us to just be very careful, you know, a lot of uncertainty, things are, you know, happening across the country doesn't mean that it can't happen here in our community. So, we need to be very vigilant. And if we see anything that's odd or awkward that you didn't ask for delivery, please contact our police department, contact our fire department. These things are seriously, because it's happening in Texas, doesn't mean that it can't happen here. We just need to be cautious. We need to inform our police department so that we can handle these matters. And then, lastly, just again, wanting to wish everyone a happy Easter. Today is Persian New Year's, which is, you know, a happy spring to new beginnings as well. And then, I know I am closing and adjourning the meeting in, in honor of Hassan Hagani. But as well, Mr. Bunuelos, Robert Bunuelos, also passed away, who worked for Congresswoman Loretta Sanchez, part-time worked for Congressman Correa now. And I will just ask our clerk, because I know we're not adjourning, because we need to get more information, if we can make sure that it's on the next agenda, so that we can adjourn the meeting in his honor. It would be greatly appreciated. And with that, just very quickly, let me adjourn this meeting to the next council meeting, which is Tuesday, April 3rd at 5:00 PM. And we will enter to close session following for a regular business meeting. This meeting is adjourned in honor and memory of Hassan Hagani, former executive director in planning and, and building agency. Hassan served as the city planning and building executive director for just a little over two years. Prior to his arrival in Santa Ana, he had a long and successful career with the cities of Glendale and West Hollywood. He passed away a little over a week ago from not, natural causes, and leaves behind a trail of friends, family members, and are, who are truly devastated from this untimely departure. The following are some thoughts by Haka Hassan's partner, which truly reflect who he was. I have been saving this photo of the day my honey would leave the hospital, but this afternoon, the love of my life moved on. He had already stared death in the face with cancer. And that picture, and myself and Councilman Benavides were talking about, Hassan loved traveling to Mexico. And the picture that Haka put on his Facebook was a picture of Hassan smiling while he was in some part of Mexico. And so, it was just great to have that reflection and to see that picture and that post. Earlier, he was fighting with pneumonia during his chemo and meningitis. This time, he fought hard for a week, but he was unwilling to live a life of limits and cavalescence. His heart gave out after his uncles and his East Bay cousin had visited him in the morning and after I had returned from lunch. He was considered, considerate to the very end. My husband was the most fearless man I know. I always told him he was my hero. I called him my hummingbird. He never apologized for who he was, even in our fights. He was a co-founder of the first international gay and lesbian Iranian organization and was out as a teenager in the 1970s. He was unwavering in his principles and his integrity, and weathered in the face of political pressure at the dais or in his personal life. In my proud opinion, he was the most dynamic city planner and administrator in Southern California, and I definitely agree to that. I beam with pride at my husband's planning accomplishments from LA to West Hollywood, to South Pasadena, to Glendale, Santa Ana, and Ontario. Yet, he took his greatest professional joy from giving opportunity to underappreciated and talented professionals in California in public service. That is, this is why fans and legions across Southern California speak so highly of Hassan. But I love the man in whose arms I fell asleep at night. His smell, his warmth, his kisses. I love the man with whom I traveled the world. Last week, we were supposed to buy tickets to our next adventure in Scandinavia, I can't pronounce that, Scandinavia and St. Petersburg. And I love the man of whom I was an uncle, a great uncle, and a son and a brother. There are many whose hearts will be shattered with this news, but my husband made me swear that no one must cry when he passes. He wanted to, he wanted a party filled with joy. I will confirm the date of his celebration of life, which is actually this Saturday in Glendale. Thank you for the incredible love you all have shown us this week. God bless. And they were together for 23 years. We adjourned this meeting in his memory and extend our most heartfelt condolences to his friends, family, and loved ones. Thank you, and have a great evening.